Finance, page 10.19. Human Resources, page 10.23. Business Information Solutions, page 10.27. And Corporate Policy Analyst Team, page 10.33.
Well, I think I've heard a response from the chief executive this morning which I haven't looked at, but I was going to raise the issue of resourcing around energy issues, but I haven't looked in my emails. So maybe it's a response in my email.
The response says let's discuss it. Please give a brief answer.
So my query was around the fact that since the resignation of the energy manager, there has been no staff resource available to progress potential operational savings in the energy space. And that issue came up, I think it was on Friday, when we had a report asking for funding to investigate a potential energy saving option. So my query was around how is it intended that potential energy savings are going to be resourced and the investigation of that is going to be resourced? And is there a need for council to consider a budget to facilitate that? Or can it be managed within existing budgets?
Quite tricky question. I think it's clear that not having an energy manager has caused some difficulties around doing that investigative work. But I think if you look back at where we have done it, the energy manager did also source consultancy support when it came to actually developing clear options. So I think that we are quite limited because we've got a very small budget for energy consultancy work. I think in an ideal world departments mainstream some of those investigations into their day-to-day work. And I think that has happened in some cases like water and waste with pump station efficiency. So I think, yeah, that's what I can say on that.
So where operational budgets are in effect big enough to absorb potential costs of investigation, that may be a solution.
Yeah.
But there may well be departments that don't perhaps have that flexibility within the operational budgets.
Right.
And there will be a person in the policy team who is named as this is the policy person who's responsible for the energy portfolio. So that was always the intent. Are you at the point of being able to say who that is? So you have a whole new staff on board.
Yeah, so Bill McFerrin has got that portfolio. But I would point out that we're a policy team, so we don't have that sort of expertise to do the technical work.
Yeah, you wish. I'm hesitant to move a motion in the absence of a report on the matter, but I'm flagging as a concern, certainly from my perspective, I'm concerned that there may be potential operational savings that we're not investigating in the absence of either a person to develop that or a budget in the case of potential operational areas that don't have flexibility within the budgets to do that investigatory work. So I don't know whether that's a shared concern. I have no information that I can move a motion on the basis of, but for me that's a real, that gives me cause for concern because I think we're missing out on potential savings as a result.
I mean, I think that's a fair point in the efficiencies that have been made to date. Everywhere has been required to trim and the energy portfolio has not been immune to that. Given that it only had one staff member, it now has none. You might argue it's given up more than its fair share. There was a policy person who, and he comes from considerable energy background, who has the policy expertise. I think the amount we put aside in the named budget for energy consultancy is about $15,000, something like that.
I think it's $10,000.
$10,000. So it is slender. We could come, we could come up on this issue through the annual plan if you like. We could come back with a report on what you might get if you were to put some of your headroom savings into exploration of energy efficiency options. But I don't know if we could do that in time for the February 12th Community Environment Meeting. It's more likely we'd have to put it to you during the drafting and submissions process. But I'm happy to put that on the cards for the team if you would like that, if councillors would like that.
I would be interested in hearing feedback from others. So perhaps the appropriate way to make a proceed is to draft a motion, you wish, and we can discuss it.
I think that would be a good idea. I think that it is important to appreciate that there in a sense two sides to this. One is the potential for efficiencies and savings. And certainly the invest to save options that we achieved up with the previous council were significant, very significant around the energy area, and they were very attractive. So it seems improved not to continue to invest in that area because we know that there is such good dividends from it, as it were. And then there's the other work around the energy plan and energy strategy, which is a bigger picture, which where the savings, if you like, and efficiencies are citywide potential. But I think that, given that those were identified by the previous energy manager and by other thinking, I think it would be useful to consider or to ask staff to give us some pointers on what the potential is and what we might want to, how we might want to resource that. So if you, if there's no rush, I mean, you don't have to do it now, but you can bring, we can bring to this meeting a little later, won't you? Yeah, that's right. Okay. Where did I get to? Corporate Policy Analyst Team, so that was the last one. Okay, so I'll move on now to the second of the reports. This is the update, Energy Efficient Lighting Upgrades 2013-14 Invest to Save Project. That's one of the ones I was referring to, actually. It's in, on page 12.119 in your large folder. Can I take this? This is largely for noting. Anyone want to ask any questions on this? Would someone like to move that we note this? Move, councillor Staines, signal councillor Benson-Pope. Any discussion? Councillor Baggot.
Just regarding the LED light technology that is now sort of overtaking the world and a lot of people are getting very enthusiastic about. Having run a higher business 30 years, which used a lot of new technology as well, I learned the hard way that to rush in and buy the new technology, quite often ended up expensive in the end. For instance, when video project just came out, I rushed out and bought three of them and then wondered why I never got a return on the investment because the first ones to come out had technical issues and were much more expensive than the second and third generation to come. So much as all I love to get our electricity bill reduced, can I suggest that we bear a wee bit of caution, have a bit of caution over rushing and, for instance, filling the whole city with LED streetlights. They are definitely what we need to do over time, but I think it would be quite a throttle to the cost of these things out of a year or two. And a wee bit of caution in getting into that with us.
I can just say that we only sent out the proposal for the energy upgrade work to ECA approved providers and they have to guarantee the saving in the payback period as part of them being able to access the subsidy for the work.
Can I just clarify too that this, under the reports I've taken, this particular memo is, it's not about street lighting?
It's not about street lighting.
The internal.
Just still being.
Yeah. When Neville Orton was here, I sent him regular updates because I get all this LED information from China on the latest version tube costs, for instance, and they already came down dramatically. When I started sending him information on the tubes for the civic centre, for instance, the first ones that come out were $46 US dollars. And the last information that I sent him before he left, they were hovering at about $12. And they've still got some distance to come down. So just to say that whenever you get new technology, there are distinct advantages to it, but quite often there's an additional advantage for waiting a year or two.
Councillor Staines, would you take it? Councillor Baggot.
When we discussed this at council previously, we suggested that it's fine for the city to invest in this sort of thing, but actually part of it should be education and learning for other people. And I'm just wondering, and it's slightly outside the annual plan process, but I hope that when this is completed, we are actually telling people how it worked, the whole picture, and where it is working so that they can see it. Because it's great that we invest to save, but there should be an educational tool as well. And I'm slightly concerned that we may forget about that now that we don't have the resources that Ginty's already alluded to having in-house to get that message across. I think it's one of the, it's a greater picture that we have to look at as well.
Well, I think that would be seen as part of the energy plan or energy strategy, exactly that, your point.
Yeah.
But that was one of the aims of the energy strategy was to utilise the experience we have in here for the benefit of the whole city.
Do we have a standard pattern when we have that sort of expenditure of reporting back on a, this is what actually happened and this is why it didn't happen quite how it was planned, which is inevitable, I presume? And this is our learnings for the future of it, as well as just the general education? I mean, one of the things that seems to come out of it to me is that we could remind the public of how difficult sometimes getting subsidies is, watch out for them. But do we have a standard pattern for a sort of report back to council on how it was supposed to be, how it's, you know?
Well, standard practice to report back on the effectiveness of different strategies and plans. So that's, we'd be intending to do that as part of the energy, energy plan. So once we've got that in place, reporting back on how effective different projects are within the plan.
Just the project by project in the sense of, that's quite a bit of money. And project, plan, outcome, learnings, sort of.
I think, I'd say it was, I think it was the first year, last year, that those invest to save type projects were put up. And I don't think we do have a process in place for how we report back.
No, but this is an attempt to keep you kind of updated on progress as we go through. So we would intend to keep doing that. But there isn't a template. The intention though is to keep reporting back to you.
Councillor Pake.
Thank you. Just a question about the ECA subsidy, it's quite a range there, 25% to 40%, there's a bit of a budget on that, on that variable. But is it, have we narrowed it down?
I might just check with Brendan, but I think that ECA changed since that report went up. They changed their subsidy process and there's a cap now for subsidy, which is $100,000. So that's a whole cap.
Right. The councillor MacTish.
Well, I've just, I've just sent the motion through Pam, so I don't know whether you want to get it now or.
Okay, I'll pick that up.
Give it to you later.
The, this has been, this, it's been moved and suggested to note this and we'll do that and then pick up on your motion. So any further discussion on noting this memorandum? If not, I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carry. Now, your motion, councillor MacTish, I'll just wait for Pam to bring it in.
In the motion, I picked up on his worship's points around the two part, or the fact that there are in-house operational matters. And then there's also how we resource the ongoing, like wider policy, which may already be covered around the energy plan, but the report probably needs to tap on both. And I'm suggesting that it come back in time for that final annual plan discussions, whether that's through a committee or to the actual energy plan discussions itself.
Right. The motion is on the board. Is there a second for that? Councillor Wilson.
I think the reason you worship why the second one is particularly relevant is that it may well be that the energy plan is completed partway through the next financial year.
Yeah. Okay. Discussion. Would you want, you wish to speak to this first?
I think I'd be just.
Yeah, that's fine. Discussion. Councillor Baggot.
The in-house energy efficiency improvements, I think there is ample scope for them. And Neville Orton had already indicated this for some time. I couldn't really understand actually why a number of things took so long to happen, particularly around water and power, for instance. I take it in-house covers all DCC operations. And I think it was councillor Stevenson that also mentioned that there are some opportunities for waste heat in some parts of the organisation and might be able to be used in others. The role of the energy manager had high hopes when Ms Orton was born as regards changing things, but those changes didn't actually seem to transfer through. And I'm wondering if it's possible that we might be able to have a culture where we don't necessarily have to have an energy manager, but each individual manager would have more of an energy consciousness regarding, you know, real savings to be made. Basically, I think there is a lot of opportunity there and I'm not sure what the plan is going forward. Perhaps CEO Bedros could give us some idea about whether we're going to have another energy manager or whether individual managers will be looking at doing this.
I think the intention for this would be to look at, is definitely to make the individual departments of council, council more aware of and conscious of and discussing the ways that they can contribute to energy savings right across the council, starting to think about corporate sustainability in a different sort of way, whether that be air miles, waste, energy efficiency, the whole raft of things. And there are some quite good examples of ways that councils, that councils, staff of councils make a commitment to examining these things and make some commitments to ongoing reductions that then get driven by managers of each department of the council. However, those things do require technical expertise and input sometimes. And I guess that's where we, it would be fair to say we've cut ourselves pretty short. We've cut ourselves tight in order to try and, in order to try and make budget. So you've got a little bit of a headroom in the budget. We'd want to re-prioritise effectively putting some of that saving back in so that we could purchase that expertise under the leadership of, you know, with somebody holding it to make sure it doesn't get wasted, but to make sure it actually feeds into corporate sustainability that is genuinely able to be carried out. That would be my preference rather than having another energy manager.
And when you talk about staff, are you talking about direct DCC staff or are you also talking about Delta, for instance? Because I'm thinking of the situation where it's been suggested that if we switch the lights on an hour later at night and switch them on, switch them off an hour earlier, we could save literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of electricity and there's enough light to safely get around in those times anyway. But that's a Delta DCC sort of gap where not one nor the other is really responsible. Are we able to have a bit more of an overview there? Is the suggestion of an hour later, hour earlier, one that's been looked at?
I don't know if Delta have looked at that and I don't know if it's been passed on. The appropriate place for you to signal to Delta and to Dunedin City Holdings that you would like them to be considering this is through their statement of intent process. So it's always open to you. You guys get to approve their statement of intent, to say to them, we would like to have you search out. And I'm sure they do it, but to spend some time and energy looking at these things. Mr Avram.
Clearing the streetlight. It's a, it's transportation operation, it's a generation that constructs it. A few years ago, we tweaked the streetlight so that it came on what's considered being the latest possible time and switched off at the earliest possible time given daylight hours. So we raised safety questions, we wanted to handle that. But I don't think there's hundreds of thousands of dollars to be saved in that budget. I asked them to look at it, it wasn't that sort of quantum. But we can look at that from a transportation point of view if you like and come back with some thinking proposed. But it's, it's our instructions of Delta that could arise, that's not a Delta question around my own. Obviously, I make the point.
Councillor Cowell.
I really like the idea that we look at these sorts of things on a council-wide idea and that each manager or each department or whatever has that in the back of their mind whenever they're looking at things. Can we save money here? Can we recycle whatever we're using? So those things are within the organisation and hopefully endemic rather than specified in one place. Because my experience is as soon as you charge one person with responsibility for things that everybody should be looking at, then no one else bothers with it anymore. Oh, that's, that's the business of the energy saver, that's the business of the so-and-so. And everyone else just takes their, a step backwards and I'll be told if I need to do something in that area. So I really like the plan of keeping it so everybody's supposed to be looking at it within Chief Executive's general purview. I would also say that it would be good if we were looking at resourcing that the chief executive had some ability to, when things came back, that there was some of them that had merit in having more of a look at than others perhaps, and that there was some budget there in a technical sense, not to provide another person, but to, to, that's a good thing, that might well get us somewhere.
Councillor Bizet.
Well, it follows on my comments from what councillor Cowell said, she probably said it better than what I will, but I have an expectation from staff, and I might be being unfair of it, that staff are always, and perhaps the CEO can comment on this, always looking at cost savings with regards to energy and other issues related to our costs. And it's, it would be unnecessary for us to have a resolution like this, while I do support this resolution, unnecessary to have this resolution because my expectation is that staff will always be looking at some, or issues with regards to cost saving and with the energy cost evaluation. Comment on that?
Look, I think increasingly staff across the organisation are bearing in mind principles like sustainability, cost effectiveness, efficiency, certainly more so than we were. This budget isn't, of course, asking for staff to do that. This budget is saying where we need to hire expertise to help with that consideration. So far around assessing the viability of various kinds of lighting options, for example, there isn't an expertise that exists in-house. So we don't, now we don't have that expertise to enable us to purchase it if we do need it, rather than just look on the internet and keep our fingers crossed.
Councillor Staines.
I support the resolutions. I think it should, as some of the other speakers have said, trying to find savings should be a way of life. And energy is part of that and the by-product of reducing our energy uses, we'd probably reduce our carbon footprint along with it. Just in terms of street lighting, I have a question. The new, the move towards LED street lighting allows intelligent lighting. And I assume that that is part of the study that is being done in the programme of replacing our street lights, that we might move towards intelligent street lights that can recognise the light level and turn the lights on or turn the lights off if it's a cloudy day or a sunny day. And more so that at late hours of night, when the number of people are around, is much less that they can use motion sensors to lift the level of light if someone's in the area or drop it back down to background lighting when, when there's no activity. So I just wanted to make sure that those are being taken into account in any new lighting programme.
So will be, and for road and transportation people would be, we're spending variety of options. We're also looking towards Christchurch and Auckland cities who have, often have a dedicated street lighting manager. We're also looking at the same sorts of things and it's looking across the world. Across the industry, that's a, that's a common discussion that's happening at the moment. The only thing that we did around street lighting, we brought back to the council with those options. And you're right, there are options around individual sensors that should turn off, motion detectors, digital lights, flux of lights, all those sorts of things. That's where the technology is here. It would be a, for Dunedin, it would be a comprehensive programme and it wouldn't just, it would just go out for 10 words of process. But at the moment is that we might be again a lot of leverage on Christchurch and Auckland and South Island. The councils are looking at that sort of leverage, need to feel price across all areas.
Councillor Wilson.
I just want to ask a question. In light of the experience with the current application which we just looked at, how much that consultant cost on that project? Do we have a sort of thin range going?
At the moment, it's $10K.
And that's exactly, I mean, costing $10K to get a substantial saving. We don't have that in the budget. If we don't have that in the budget and they have to, staff have to come in a year later, the considerable costs, it just doesn't make sense not to include this at the moment. And I think councillor Staines missed the point in understanding that this whole budget has been cut from there at the moment. It just makes sense to do this.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, I'm, I'm heartened to hear councillor Staines mention our city's carbon footprint. And I think the implications of this are, are many and varied for our cities, the development of our city's long overdue environment strategy, which I understand is finally kicking off at this year. I have a question about the motion that talks about the implementation of the citywide energy plan once adopted, but not the development of it. And I wonder, is that because the intention is for that plan to be done before the 2014-15 year?
So my understanding is that the development of the energy plan is already budgeted for in policy team budgets. So there isn't, at least, there isn't any need for the additional budget for the development phase.
Okay. And that's not, the development of that plan isn't compromised or threatened in any way by the current lack of an energy manager?
It hasn't been helped. But I think, I think we're now back on track in terms of delivering an energy plan, but there's no budget in terms of any actions that the council might wish to take as a result of that plan.
Councillor Staines, a journey.
It just seems to me that we, if the comments that I've heard from our chief executive are correct, we have very little money in our budget now for working on invest to save options, be they energy or be they anything else. And I, this one, this set of resolutions addresses that. My suggestion is that maybe we want to think about a resolution that creates a budget that the chief executive has discretion to use for the purposes of investing in either the preparatory work or the investigative work for invest to save within our organisation. So I noticed that we have this one related to energy, but there have been other areas where there's, there's projects that are potentially there, where we could potentially save ratepayer money, but we don't actually have much budget. And in this annual plan, we actually had no invest to save options arrive at all because we haven't had the horsepower or the money to do that work to give us. So I think maybe we're starting to cut off our nose to spite our face and perhaps out of the surface at the end of the day, if we have a little bit, that we put aside a budget that is specifically tagged to these, these types of cost reduction activities that do need some consultancy or investigative and preparatory work in order for us to make decisions on them.
Councillor Pake.
Yeah, I support what councillor Staines is driving at, which is to resource this area. And I'm not, yeah, I'm still a little bit unsure whether we've got the resources to actually develop this energy plan in the first place anyway, but if, what I'm getting is a message that maybe we can, we can find some money for that. Twenty years ago, I led the Dunedin Environmental Business Network and went into a trial with ECA in Dunedin, a six-month trial, working with businesses. There was a little uptake on it. The councils here, regional and the city, were both murmuring about this, what we've been discussing in this debate at that time, but really didn't get any traction. That's 20 years ago. Here we are, 20 years on, trying to make some advance in this area. And I'm encouraged to hear what the chief executive is telling us about spreading responsibility across the departments and getting them really geared up. Although I think perhaps we do need advice alike. Now, G and Z might be able to give us through, perhaps, through our sources. And ECA surely has a local government sector that work, does work with local government sector to do that. So, yeah, I'm just wondering whether ECA can advise us if we don't, you know, just help us with, with the technology leaps that have been made in the 20 years since I was working on this issue. And, yeah, so welcome us. And I just want, do we need to tweak that so that, so that it is looking like we have got the will to develop an energy plan? Does that, is that already there?
I think that's been addressed.
Yeah.
Okay.
further speakers, councillor Matt Tavish.
Yeah, just briefly, I, I think there are a couple of points made by my colleagues that I'd like to pick up on. The first is, I think that staff across the organisation is, is raised by councillor Bizet and Dr Vidroes. They, they are identifying these potential areas of savings. But I think the, the point is well made that they don't have the technical expertise or potentially the budget to investigate whether or not that is in actuality or whether it is simply something that is perhaps not there. And that's the step that we want them to be able to make before having to come back to us for a budget in order to do that investigation. So that's what this is facilitating. I do have a nervousness around the fact that we haven't put, well, maybe my fault, haven't put a budgetary number on this for inclusion in the draft plan. I wonder whether a sequential motion should pass. They moved that a provisional, say 50K or 60K be included in the draft budget pending confirmation once this report comes through. And that just gives, gives us a little bit more, or gives the community a little bit more clarity about what it is that we're intending here. So I guess I'm signalling that should this pass, I would move a sequential motion that we include a provisional 50K in the budget or in the draft 2014-15 budget for consultation. Or I can, I can, I'd be sort of mend it.
Just a question, Ginty.
Yeah.
Do you want this 50 or 60K purely for what you have there or as an invest-to-save budget? So that it enables preparatory work, maybe in the energy area, there's some clear ones there. But there could be other areas where there is an opportunity that, that looks significant in terms of invest-to-save that we don't do any work on because we haven't got a budget. So I'd, I'd like to see a little bit broader definition. So there is the opportunity to at least do the preparatory work in any invest-to-save opportunities. Maybe there's a ranking system that ranks out which ones you're going to look at first based on, on how likely they are or what the degree of saving might be. But there is something there to do to work.
Right, but I, can I suggest, what I sense is that were councillor Stan's suggestion to be included in this motion, it would substantially change the thrust of the motion. Whereas a sequential motion by evil of you could pick up on energy as well as other invest-to-saves. So my suggestion is that we stick with this.
I'll signal this.
And then we pick up a sequential motion that'll cover, that the budget side that covers both, unless you wish to.
No, I think it's acceptable actually.
All right, all done. I'm going to put this motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Do you wish to?
Just get in your number.
Aye. I'll just take, we might as well do this now, so.
Just confused with staff, the question, how much do you need is not one wisely asked of the chief executive. I can type for school times. I, I, I think if you put $50,000 into the budget and said this is for, that you, that we consult on the idea of having this $50,000 to investigate and invest to save, and it covers energy and other areas where there might be savings. If in the first three months, we've investigated some options that have spent the $50,000, that potentially have saved the council $200,000, then I feel very comfortable about coming back to you and asking for another 50 out of the anticipated savings from the lot that we've already generated. So it has its, it has a potential to be a self-perpetuating fund if we, if we are, unless we're putting up dodo ideas, so.
So I would move.
I'll just go try and change the motion for you.
Well, you, you can give the opportunity to do that when I know what it is.
That for the purposes of consultation, a sum of $50,000 be assigned for the investigative work required.
For invest-to-save.
Yeah, for invest-to-save projects. Yeah, add it to the CEO's budget.
Now, can I give councillor Calvert the opportunity to second that, but then you, or have you got?
Yes, no, I'm happy with that bit and I will second that bit. I just wondered whether we, it would be useful to add on something saying the CEO will report back on her use of that budget and whether more is required. Having, you know, picking up. Yeah, so it's a, a rolling report.
To be recorded back on a periodic basis from the chief executive. Thank you. So it's been moved to councillor Stan's, seconded to councillor Calvert. Just get the wording settled before we open up discussion on it. Right, speakers, councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, I just have a clarification, I guess. The previous motion that we just passed talked about development and implementation of these. And I noticed that there's nothing that explicitly covers implementation in this motion. And I wonder, is that implicit or is that, would there potentially be downstream consequences of having to find that budget or?
At this sort of level, I suspect what you're talking about is the work to go away, hire a consultant, work out the ECA subsidy, say for this last, last time to invest to save option, come up with definite budget in a timeframe and come back to council. So you, you might get a little implementation done, but, but if these invest-to-save options start being generated by staff, you won't get a whole, there's not, well, the last two, neither of them could have been done within a courier $50,000. They required a capital investment then, which would be repaid over a relatively, I think we were looking for repayment over a three to four year lifespan. And after that, it's all plain savings. So I imagine most of the suggestions that come up will be of that type. And we will then come back to council and look to reprioritise funding and get a definite steer from you on that. But enables us to not, to not have to wait till the end of the financial year to even do the investigation.
Okay, I'll come back to, come back to you. Councillor Stan, you moved this, so I should have given you the opportunity to speak at the beginning.
Just not wanting to put words into the chief executive's mouth. But I assume that if the investigative work showed a project that for, say, $300,000, we could save $3 million, that in fact, we as a council, having received that information and been convinced that the return is that big, would probably say, do it. Even if the budget was not there, we do have the ability to either prioritise, I assume, or if necessary, borrow in order to gain that saving.
In my view, that's where I, is where as staff would come back to you and say, we've identified it. If you spend the $300,000, you can save $3 million over X period of time. And our suggestion is you reprioritise this piece of capital that we no longer need or this piece of operational that we're going to stop doing for six months or whatever it might be, or some options for how to pay for it. But I would think rather than me just make the decision, my inclination would be to bring it back here.
councillor Wilson.
I'm very supportive of this. I'm slightly concerned that we see this as an answer to the previous point that councillor Tavish made. Because I see this as being something that could be used in application to replant half the trees that we've got growing under power lines. And instead of paying for them to be topped every three years, we can just have them, they don't need to be topped. That's an invest-to-save. But it's not, that doesn't answer the question that this has come out of, which is about energy and having some money in the budget for energy initiatives and implementation of the energy plan. And so the question I think I have is, is this seen as solution? Or is there actually a need for another motion which says that we put another 30 or 50 or whatever the amount is into the energy implementation? Because this doesn't actually do that.
Why don't we come back to you with a report on the energy implementation? At which point we start to, I mean, honestly guessing on these things is just, it's just, it's bad science. Why don't we do the report, work out, it's tempting, but work out what we think is a genuine need for spend for investigation of energy, invest-to-save options, and come back to you with a report with a figure, with a figure, a clear steer that it's less than $50,000, that we're not, you know, that we're not talking about throwing money, that we're talking about.
I, I, I'm happy with that, except for the purposes of consultation, what we're putting in there.
Yes.
I mean, last time I think we did something quite good. We noted that we didn't do, put a budget in for some things. Are we going to note in this, in the purposes of consultation, that while we're putting a whole of work into and imagining substantial resources into developing an energy plan, we're actually not putting any money into the energy implementation? And therefore it may sit on the shelf for another year. I mean, that is otherwise what we have to say. So are we going to consult on at that level and say, actually, this, this is what it looks like in the plan? And see if we're getting these submissions?
Well, that, that is the truth. You know, the, not, not every piece of strategy, you do, a lot of it, you try and say, okay, how do we, so for the social, social strategy, for example, there's no money in the budget specifically for the implementation of that strategy. We say to staff right across the council, we need to be coordinating work. And, and there's some very good work going on with the Cozy Home Symposium, for example, to start looking at where the prioritisation of, of, of effort is to, because we already put bits of money in all over the place, how do we, how do we pull that together in order to best deliver better housing stock right across the city? You know, we've got some great houses and some not great, so great houses. This one is a little bit the same. We have money in the budget for energy. We're pulling together an energy plan, but we don't have an energy strategy budget. It may be that we'll find energy tagged money in the budget. It may be that we need, that we all need some in order to specifically implement strategies depending on, you know, the, the projects depending on where the energy plan gets to.
Could I just ask apropos that, that there'd be no reason why this fund, you, you might come back to us and say, we have looked at the potential now that the, now that the energy plan is developed, we have looked at the potential for investment and implementation, and we think there are these returns here. And just as you would treat any, anything else. So I assume that this could be used for that. councillor McTavish.
Yeah, well, the last two speakers have picked up on some of the issues that I wish to raise, but I, I would like to touch on them in just a little more detail. The, just before I do though, is it the mover and seconders intention that this be for in-house work? Because in-house invest-to-save initiatives? I just wonder whether that should be clear in the motion, given that the previous motions that we passed referred specifically in one case to in-house.
Agreed with that.
And then the second part was pertaining to the energy plan more broadly.
So just, what difference, what change does that make to the word, would that make to the wording?
It would just add the word in-house before invest-to-save initiatives.
Okay, are you hesitant with that?
And I, I think the point that councillor Wilson made is, was, was really the one that I wanted to make. I think that unless this budget or a proportion of this budget is specifically earmarked for energy projects, it doesn't deliver, doesn't necessarily deliver on motion 1A. And it certainly doesn't deliver on motion 1B. Now, I, I appreciate that that may not have been the intention of the mover and seconder, and that's fine. But I think that we do, perhaps in the, in the, in the documentation that goes out, need to be specific that this may be budget that could be used for energy initiatives or it could be for other initiatives. And that gives people who would like to see us wait it one way or the other, the opportunity to comment on that. I also, I do also like councillor Wilson have, do have concern that we haven't got budget in there for energy plan implementation. I think we got a very clear signal from our community two years ago now that they really wanted us to invent an energy plan. Presumably that wasn't just in an energy plan, but in the actions that were listed in that plan. However, I am slightly more relaxed about that budget because I think that it is, this is a priority action as listed in the economic development strategy. The economic development strategy budget is there to resource the actions which are listed as priority actions. And I would assume that this project, the energy plan project would be as, as important as any other of those priority actions. So I think that that's where we would see budget coming for, for 1B. But I think that that possibly needs to be noted as well in the, in the information that we send out to constituents. The only other thing that I, the only other thought that I had around potential prioritisation of this fund, which has been earmarked here by councillors, Calvert and Stan's, is that potentially the, the prospective projects could be prioritised according to their alignment or delivery on other council strategies and plans as well as their budget implications. So if there were two projects that we go, that potentially we're going to deliver equally in terms of budget, if one was delivering on the energy plan and one was not delivering on any other strategy or plan, it may be that the one that was delivering on the energy plan may get priority. But it was just a thought.
further speakers, councillor Stan, your writer reply.
In proposing this funding, the intent that I see behind it is to allow work to bring, to bring invest-to-save options. So rightly, it's not tagged just to energy. I think when you look at where the, where to invest, if there were proposals came to council that say had a $3 million saving for an energy-based project and a $300,000 saving from some other project and the capital was the same, clearly you'd go with the energy one. Vice versa, you would, you would do the same thing. So what I see in this budget is that this money will, through, through an initial selection process, pick up where the best hits might lie, do the work to identify whether they are viable and to confirm the return on the investment. And then that would set a priority that comes to us for us to look at assigning budget. So I see this as not just targeting energy, but at looking at all the in-house options. And who knows, it might be a contestable fund where the partners can get themselves up the budget list by reducing their costs in some other way. That means they don't have some other little of their, their pad projects cut out of the budget because we're trying to make a saving. So I think there can be a bit of fun attached to this. I'd also just like to confirm that from an energy plan point of view, it is in the economic development strategy and funding would come from the economic development in a budget. So I urge the debate with this resolution.
That was, and if you've got something more to add, because that was the writer reply.
Ah, do I not have a?
Yeah, yes, yes.
I just want to add that I didn't see it necessarily as a competitive thing in that if we could save money in three different areas by spending some money this year, I didn't see why we shouldn't be spending the money in all of them this year if it was going to be recouped back in the next sort of three years anyway. You can, any number of them can be recouped back. So although a bit of competitive edge is not a bad thing, I don't see it as a competitive thing, but for the good of, if it's good enough, lots of them could happen.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved, seconded and discussed. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you. Now, we move on to, that was Q, we move on to R, which is updated growth projection.
That's what I was.
Oh, we're on the West, sorry. This is resourcing of budget options for progressive community resilience forum recommendation. Include, follow pages 12.121 to 12.137. And I'll open it up in the first instance for questions. Councillor McTavish.
You wish, I, um, I emailed through to Maria asking her to provide us with budgetary, um, what the budgetary implications or requirement would be for the options for which there is currently no budget attached. So she might be able to provide those?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was an oversight in the report. Um, for the point two FTE, new staff resources and some of the options, we're estimating that would be around twenty-two K more.
Twenty-two?
Yeah.
Option three?
Option three.
Uh, yes, yes.
Um, further questions? Councillor Hawkes.
Yeah, I have a question around option two, existing staff resource and new budget. Um, given the existing workload of the existing staff resource, would there be even any point in allocating budget for this work if they don't have, I mean, do they have the time? Is there staff resourcing that could even be allocated to it, should there be a fifteen K budget given to them?
I think that's why I think in the report we said that we could take forward the work from October. I think it's fair to say we've got a fair, a fair amount of work in, in the corporate policy team. And you would definitely see us having to prioritize the food work from October over other work that we might have been doing with that existing staff resource.
Councillor Carroll.
I'm not sure whether this is a point at which we, we can have a preference for an option or not. But if, so.
Well, well, I invite you to move something. Can we get the questions out of the road and then come back to, someone might move something, but I'm happy to, if you ask any questions you want.
Okay, my question beyond that is the, there's a disadvantage reported for option one, which says that wouldn't, that council wouldn't be able to offer financial support for future community-led research or something. Seems to me that the described as community-led research in this paper is actually not what I sort of think of as community-led. It's essentially government departments who are already doing research, and it's their job to be doing research, and I don't totally see, A, why that's sort of thought of as community when I think of it as university or polytech or something else. And secondly, why we would be supporting them doing research, but I might have just misunderstood.
I think in the report we're talking about community-led initiatives and, or research. So I think it's just been clear to us over the last year or so that there's quite a lot of wish to do food-related work in the community, and up till now we haven't been able to really accept for maybe sort of things like providing a venue for people to meet, being able to support those, that work. So I think that was why we'd put a budget in.
One of the described in there, however, are, is it with government departments, research?
No, that includes things like, um, the local food network, which have run two now quite big public forums. And, you know, for them to do that costs money, and we at the moment are not able to provide any support for that.
I'm referring to in your, your report where it says a number of requests for support for community-led research projects, including a proposal from the poly, a polytech centre, you know, and the University of Otago, and there's nutritional and activity research, all of which seem to me not in my head community, but it may be that in, in official speak it is community.
I think there's a tendency now for those projects that are funded through academic institutions to also seek, uh, partnership or match funding from other organizations outside of the educational sector, like a local council who's, who may benefit from that work. So I think that's, that's what they're always talking to.
Councillor Thompson.
I'm just wondering whether there is, um, uh, an option for clearly identified initiatives that are, that arise out of this, that have an economic development aspect to them to come through economic development and be contestable along with any other, um, aspects that might come through, um, that budget. I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm in danger of being classified as an attorney question into a statement, so I'll hold on a second, but that's my question.
He's a good teacher.
I, I think I would say sometimes it's not totally black and white that a project's just about economic development. You know, there's, and that I think is with something like food, where it's quite early work, it's sometimes hard to make that clear split. I, I take that for me.
I suppose it's, it's, um, the lack of black and white in this that actually makes it hard when you, when you've only got a few hundred thousand dollars to play with to determine whether this is the priority.
Councillor Hawkes.
Yeah, this, this, any staff, further staff, any staff resource allocation, would that be corporate policy staff? Is that how you envisage?
I would say so, yeah, because I think it's quite early stage work, and I think you would be hard pressed to put it into any other sort of department at this, this point in time.
And should we go with options one or two? Are you confident that the skill sets exist within our current corporate policy staff to advance that work to its full potential?
Yes, I think I am, because I think the main part of that work is engaging with stakeholders and trying to address, trying to identify what challenges, risks, opportunities there are, and that's quite standard, yeah, policy work.
Councillor Law.
Um, I've been told since I started here that, uh, there's no such thing as a silly question, so I'm either going to ask one or make, I'm lacking in understanding. But the question I've got, are we concerned, and maybe it's just the title, but are we thinking that we don't have a resilient food source? Do we think that we're somehow in a, in a city where there's a shortage? I mean, we've got agricultural land all around us, I mean, there's enough milk comes off my road to supply the city at Dunedin, and there's a lot more roads than mine. Um, you know, people turn twenty thousand, thirty thousand litres as a week, and hydroponics in the middle of my scale. Um, it, it just seems to me that we don't, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Is this something about food supply, or is this something about fieldwork, sort of things like the farmers market? Which, yeah, can, yeah, just a wee bit of.
There, there's definitely a, a global conversation about are our food networks resilient? And I think it would be fair to say, although we do have resources for some food products, we don't have resources for, for all food products, and I don't think we at the moment know what impact it might have if we were suddenly to be unable to source something like rice or something like that. So I think I would maybe look to councillor McTavish, because I think she has, uh, more of an understanding of the area for some of the detail on that.
The work that the Community Resilience Forum did, I think, came from a resilience perspective, so that's why the title is what it is. Um, but I think that what the CRF identified was, um, the suite of opportunities that exist in this space. So whilst, yeah, there are some questions to be asked about if we did have a supply chain disruption, how easy would it be for our farmers to get their milk to the relevant, um, large cooperative and then back to the shops? Um, but I don't think that that's all of what this is about. That's only a very small part of what I think with this conversation, um, in, in this piece of work would be seeking to achieve. So, um, an example, for example, in the, um, tourism or economic development space, when you look at somewhere like Wellington, that runs the really successful Wellington on a Plate Festival, and I think you could argue that Dunedin has probably better raw material than Wellington. When you look at the paddocks of our hinterland and the Kaumwana out to sea, and, um, and, and our tertiary institutions that work in this area, um, but we're not yet capitalizing on that in the, the way that we could. Um, we, we haven't investigated, we haven't pulled together those, um, stakeholders for those conversations. So, and it's just one of any number of examples that the Community Resilience Forum identified. So I think, you know, um, yes, it's called resilience, the paper is called resilience, but it is only one very small part of what has been identified as needing work in the area of food. Everything from regulation through to economic development, social issues, equity issues, um, issues of supply and, and, and demand, um, issues around cultural development as a city, issues around bridging between rural identity and urban core. Um, yeah, there's a, there's a whole range of, of work that, that could be done in this area. And I think it, it focuses on our existing involvement. So we're currently, um, we're currently, as a city, um, as a city council, providing a whole bunch of different services, everything from infrastructure through to regulatory functions in the food space. And we've never done any work to find out how each of those different areas impacts on the other. So they're currently all operating in silos, we've got a recap, not, not retape, so they're making a, a development strategy, and we've got regulatory work, um, through environmental health, which directly cuts across that. So it's broad, as though it's not just about resilience, although that's what it's called.
I just, I, I guess the problem I see is with the example you've given, say, for example, milk to cooperative and back. I mean, surely that's just an ordinary business principle, just like any other business, just like I wouldn't expect, um, a sheep farm would have to worry about, you know, it's, it's not the council's responsibility, as I understand it, to worry about how we market our product or how we transport our product, and I just, yeah. If, if that's what this is about, I'm, I wouldn't be very supportive of it.
Well, can I, can I suggest that we leave this conversation until we actually have a motion to speak to? Because I'll, I'll get the questions and then we'll.
Can I suggest a motion?
Certainly, but why don't you prepare it? And, or, I mean, it might not take much preparation, I don't know, but you, you do that, and we'll get through the rest of the questions, and then we'll come back to a motion. Um, councillor Vanes.
I was just wondering if, if anybody has actually contacted the major food businesses and food distribution outlets whose, let's face it, this is their area of expertise. Have we spoken to them?
We've had some, uh, conversations with some of the food outlets like Foodstuffs. Um, I think that part of the work that's been proposed to be done through the report would be to have more in-depth conversations with a whole range of food stakeholders, including food distributors.
Thank you. Councillor Pizzi.
If we did nothing at all, what would be the consequences to, nothing at all, unless, what would be the consequences to it?
That's quite a hard question, um, I think.
That's pretty respectful, really, and what would be the consequences?
I think it's, like, I think we had some presentations that did highlight some of the possible consequences. Um, one of the sort of prominent food actors in Dunedin is, um, John Foote. He's come from Christchurch. After the earthquake, they had significant food supply issues. And so he's raising the fact that we haven't really got planning in place in Dunedin for any, any event like that. And I think the other issue that I've become aware of as we've gone through the process as the Community Resilience Forum heard from different stakeholders in the food space is that at the moment, the, the sort of, the agenda around food could potentially be hijacked by one specific group of stakeholders, and I think that there is an opportunity for the council to, to sort of moderate and coordinate the discussion, to make sure that all stakeholders are reflected in any, any work that goes forward. And I think councillor Vansevis's point about the food distributors at the moment, I don't think that they're as involved in the conversation as, say, the local food network or.
Councillor White.
Thank you, Worshe. Um, I congratulate councillor McTavish on putting a better spin on it than what she did on December ninth, um, council meeting we had, when we discussed, um, community resilience and et cetera. The, um, and going back to that discussion, we talked about the food, it's the Community Resilience Forum being about community gardens, orchards on public land, advice on gardening and agriculture, getting to the active, and some leases and community venues. Under community development, talked about community grants for food-related projects and groups. And under city development, we talked about planning measures to protect arable land in current urban agriculture. Has, have you changed your point of view? Because I, when I have Wellington on a plate, that doesn't seem to be the same conversation we had about the council.
Yeah, if you may, that answer.
Oh, yep, that's a question.
So I think that some of the, um, what you're referring to is some of the list on page twelve, one, three, one of the original report. Um, so there are a whole range of issues, um, which are raised in that table there. Perhaps I did a poor job of articulating the full range of those, and if that's the case, I apologize. But certainly, um, the community resilience work, resilience forum's work looked at a full suite of opportunities and challenges to Dunedin's food system. And I think those are reflected on page one, twelve, one, three, one, carrying over onto twelve, one, three, two.
I think I would point out as well that that table was not exhaustive, and the Community Resilience Forum's work has been purely in initial investigative work into his food and resilience initiative for the city.
The, the, um, Community Resilience Forum's recommendation that council needs to do some more investigative work with stakeholders in this area reflected the fact that we felt that, um, our ability to fully investigate the challenges and opportunities in this area was limited as a working party. And we felt that, um, a specific staff approach would be a more appropriate way of, of exploring the full suite of challenges and opportunities.
So do you still, um, have a keen support or a take it then of putting, um, public land into community gardens and things like that, and then, uh?
Well, I think this, and you're going a bit beyond the ambit of this particular report. What we're looking at here, um, is the options for resourcing in, within council. So I'll, I'll hold that one. Um, councillor Hawkes.
Yeah, a few people have mentioned economic development, and I think that's valid and, and when you're looking at a more coordinated and internal approach to food-related issues and opportunities being the key word, and councillor Staines has admitted to that initial recommendation. I wonder, um, where in the current work being done on our economic development strategy would this fit in? Is anyone doing any work where this would actually fit in? Um, and if that was to come through economic development, I'm assuming that resourcing would have to be allocated to that department to capitalize on these potential opportunities?
Yeah, I think to date, the sort of economic development units' work on food is, is really business support to food businesses. They support, I think, around ninety-one food businesses. And I think that the work that this is proposing is to really look at, are there sort of more city-wide opportunities that could be addressed? So I think, um, it may be that it's a combination of staff that may need to work on that work, on, on, on developing that, and I think the economic development unit staff would be key to that group.
Councillor Wilson.
Mine is a question.
Councillor Staines.
I'm just trying to get my head around the economic development opportunity in this. Because a bit like councillor Wiley, initially I thought this was about price wars going up, we can't bring food to Dunedin, how do we make sure we've got our own food sources here? And while that's an issue, um, at some point potentially in the future, or if we had a major earthquake somewhere that cut off our food, food sources, how do we get food? But there are things that do need to be looked at. But the question I have is, how much of this is related to the growth in our food economy? And, and, you know, Dunedin on a plate, I agree, we have fantastic foodstuffs. There's a lot of work going on in the chamber at the moment, uh, lifting the profile of our foodstuffs from Otago and around our, our region in China, and trying to get the opportunity to, to get markets, grow markets, which will then potentially grow our producers. So I, I see, I recognize the economic development element, um, and I think there is potentially aspects of this that could be picked up under the economic development strategy and, and be woven into the budget of projects that are running in there. But it's just, to me, I just try to get an understanding of how much is on risk mitigation, and how much is on growing the profile of our foods and increasing or encouraging more people to get into the production of high quality foods.
I think, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I think that that's exactly what this work, if it goes forward, would be seeking to find out, like. would be seeking to find out, like, what is the proportion that we should be focusing on resilience issues and what's the proportion that we focus on economic development opportunities? Because I think at the moment, we wouldn't have an answer to that.
Certainly this, while the economic development budget isn't a big one, um, it, it is an area that we do have a focus and we recognise our primary sector, uh, within the, the economic development strategies. So maybe there's some project work that could be done in there once we have a better understanding.
Different way, just to add to that, I thi- I think one of the key things that, um, was identified by the community resilience forum is the current siloed nature of our approach to food. And that's one of the things that, um, the motions of the resilience forum was seeking to highlight for council, is that, you know, there's probably some really great work happening within EDU with those ninety food sector businesses. But over here, we've got environmental health, which have different drivers. And, um, and over here, we have, um, you know, community development who are working with food banks. Um, and then we have FoodShare over here, which is a food rescue organisation, startup in Dunedin, um, who are working with our waste team to try to connect some of those different players together. So I guess one of the issues that really stood out for the forum when we were looking at this is that, um, in terms of the Local Government Act and, um, the need for us to be doing things in an efficient and effective way that is most cost-effective for households and businesses and appropriate to both present and future circumstances. There's, there's no way that certainly I, having gone through that investigatory process, could put my hand on my heart and say, I'm sure that we're doing this food stuff in, in that way, simply because of that siloed approach. So, um, part of what the forum's recommendations is about is about breaking down those silos. So, um, whilst having something that sits with an EDU is great, um, I think that what the, the community resilience forum was recommending was having someone that networked right across all of those different ways in which we currently interface with food to try to get the best outcome, not only for the city, but also for ratepayers.
Councillor Wilson.
I was on the community resilience forum and I, can I just go and announce that I appreciate the opportunity to sit here, but I just want to give a slightly different angle on this point or not? Or is that gonna come into debate?
Well, I think it's probably appropriate in debate. Now, if everyone's asked all the questions they want to, and I'm quite happy to take more when the motion is put, um, if there, if there needs to be more clarity. But we'll move on to something that we can actually discuss. So councillor Calvert, you had a.
I'm not sure it's a perfect motion, but really what I'm, what I wanted to signal is, um, that work can, work should be done in that regard, but it should be done using existing resource. I do understand that that is.
Okay, this is the second councillor Van Vissens. Right. Carry on. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
The thing to me is partly that we've got no money, partly that, again, like other things, and partly echoing what councillor McTavish is saying, it's a council-wide issue insofar as it is an issue. Um, and I think more, more thought needs to be done to bring it back to something that councillors can understand as to what, what we're supposed to, how we might be being encouraged to or recommended to or whatever, interact with the background question. It's, it seemed to me from around the table this morning that people aren't sure where the whole thing's going. We need to know where the whole thing might or might not be being suggested to be going. It is a council-wide issue, but we haven't got any budget for it at the moment. Once we know more from option one, then we might have some idea of an uptake about whether we do want to put any budget into doing something else. At the moment, I don't think it's at the point where it wants a extra person doing extra things individually and add into a severely stressed budget. So that's why I'm moving here.
Councillor Thompson.
Look, I'm actually gonna support this motion, but I might in a year's time. Um, my, my concern is that, um, there are a number of different aspects getting mixed up in this. And I think that's actually making it harder rather than easier. Um, for example, I constantly hear, um, earthquakes as a reason for changing things. And I'd just simply point out that nobody starved to death in the Christchurch earthquake and that apart from not having Mami for far too long, um, uh, no, people may have had to use a different kind of toilet paper in Dunedin for a few days. But the sheer size of the dreaded agri-business, um, meant that things flowed relatively easily, very quickly. But in many other places around the world where, um, you have a significantly distributed and much smaller, um, food and agricultural thing, people do in fact starve to death and major events like that. So for me, that's not actually the issue. I think that there are some issues in what councillor McTavish talks about around food. The failure to, um, grasp potential opportunities that might exist either within government department, sorry, within council departments, um, or, um, in terms of things that could be happening at a community or a, an economic development level. But my problem is that I, I don't think that any of these options are actually going to change that. Because there's just not the resource, there's not the resource to actually do more of that service at a very low level. So I, I, I know that the people who have been contributing would feel, will feel down by that. And it may be that they, that some of them may not wish to continue contributing. And that's, and I acknowledge that as a risk. But I think for me, before I'm prepared to put a significant resource into this, and there's no point in putting resource unless it's gonna actually achieve the aims intended by the resource. Um, then I, I would much prefer to have some clearer, less amorphous goals put in front of me that I could support. So I don't feel comfortable with any of these options. I don't think they will change anything in the short term. And, um, I, I know that my colleague will tell me afterwards that I've missed the point. But, um, uh, in this occasion, I, if it comes back in a year's time with some more concrete things around, I may well be prepared to support it, but not on that.
Councillor Wilson and then councillor Van Vissens and then councillor Bezic while I take a break. Carry on.
Um, I think it's really unfortunate. There's been a, um, focus on this because it's kind of a community resilience. Just because it's been a really good debate, doesn't matter where it happened, that this report came to. And I think we have to take aside the word resilience because this debate happened to come out of a forum that was called community resilience, but actually what it's offering, uh, is something completely different, less focused on resilience, but about opportunities and with some challenges in there. Um, so I wish we'd put that, where it came from aside. Um, and I think that there's a lack of understanding about the opportunities that come with food. Um, I remember the streets of, um, after not that many years ago, full of young kids working on potato growing, carrot growing and everything like that. I know that, um, Mike, um, spent a lot of time in his childhood doing that same stuff with the veggie growing. Those are opportunities to say, well, why haven't you got the food industry in here and the supermarkets and everything? Well, it's like saying, why aren't you talking to the T A B about the gambling problem? Because that actually may be the problem. And what we have to do is look at saying what we can be doing to get those jobs back. We want to get ten thousand more jobs in Dunedin. I'm telling you, food is one of those ones. Twenty years ago, if we'd been having this discussion about heritage officer in Dunedin, we probably would have thought, why would we have to do that? And you look at now and would anyone take Glenn's position away? And I just think we're not seeing the right picture here because the same opportunities are there. We've got high-class soils in the city. We get requests time and time again to develop those high-class soils because people can't see that the opportunities are there now. And we're not focusing on it. We're at risk of losing those high-class soils and any opportunity to develop our food industries because they're gonna be so spread out shortly because they've been developed. And I just, I'm not sure how you can articulate this better than the debates that we had, which were fantastic at, um, in, in the community resilience forum. And I'm sad that we didn't make them available for more people to go to because there's a real energy out there. They're not, farmers' markets are not a fair, feel-good thing, Mike. They, with all respect, they are a real way of jobs being created in the city that will one day protect, potentially become export jobs. And, um, and the food movement throughout the world, and it was great what Paul Aldous did linking us up with Professor.
Kevin Morgan.
Thank you. Um, in the day that we, in the evening, we had listening to him, talking about what the potentials are. Some will succeed, some won't. And just like heritage development, some will work, some won't. But I think we focused on the opportunities there. There's some really good stuff that if it was properly resourced, even to a small degree, to give that initiative some hope, um, we could get some real wins on the board. We have potential to lose a heck of a lot in the city with the high-class soil development if we don't start looking at those assets and saying, how can we use them better? Um, I, um, I regret if we don't put any funding in there. I think there is a goodwill out there that will make something happen, regardless of budget or not. The lost opportunity, however, would be substantial if we could put something in there. And I would be voting against this motion accordingly.
Councillor Van Vissens.
I'm all for resilience in any way that we can organise it. To me, uh, I very much welcome the idea that we consider resilience and we consider it in all areas and thank councillor McTavish for, for doing it in this area. Uh, for me, resilience is fundamentally something which makes you look more long-term. And long-term thinking, I think, is, is the one thing that we really owe, uh, to the ratepayers of Dunedin. However, when you look at the Local Government Act that was mentioned before, especially the Amendment Act of, uh, two thousand and twelve, it's a clear signal from government that we need to get back to basics. Uh, and, uh, the, the basics that we need to look at are really the services that we supply to ratepayers. And food is not one of them. Uh, I agree that, uh, it's, it's a good thing to have, uh, food resilience, but I also agree that it would be an equally good thing to have, uh, better energy resilience, uh, better communications resilience, um, better medicines distribution resilience, better vehicle parts distribution resilience. We need to make sure that all of these things are somehow always gonna be available. But when I say we need to, it's our society that needs to. It's not DCC business to do that. In fact, the DCC is in a poor position to try and, uh, centralise or pull together the stakeholders for, uh, food resilience because it's not our business. There are very big businesses out there, foodstuffs as we've mentioned, but there's a whole lot more of them, uh, from the stevedore and khan's right through to the organic food growers that you see at the market, uh, whose business it is and whose expertise, uh, is all there to do that. And they have done it, uh, in the past. And as councillor Thompson pointed out in the Christchurch earthquake, terrible thing that it was, um, food resilience very quickly, uh, was able to, uh, pick up any slack that they, that the earthquake produced. I quite often refer back to my parents' experience of the Second World War, where food resilience was as much of a problem as it's probably ever been, um, for, uh, recent, um, uh, um, countries. And, um, again, there was no way that any food resilience forum prior to the Second World War could have anticipated what was going to happen, could have usefully had a stakeholder discussion that would have actually given them some benefit. What happens in a food resilience, um, catastrophe, uh, is that we adapt. And the we that adapts is not the city council, it's the businesses that are in the business of supplying these things. So to that end, I'm very happy for city council staff to consider, uh, long-term, uh, food chain issues and perhaps draw together, um, some conversations between food suppliers. If they're prepared to have those conversations, I suggest most of the big businesses, for instance, simply won't have time for that. And, uh, therefore support, um, councillor Calvert's, uh, view that we should, uh, simply just, um, go with option one. Uh, I think this, uh, food resilience, um, staff member proposed, um, is, is, is close to spending public money on a food solution that's looking for a problem. I don't think we have a problem and therefore, uh, I strongly recommend that we back to option one.
Councillor Bezic.
Yeah, um, I apologise if my question before seemed somewhat facetious. Um, I was considering the issue, uh, of food supply at a lower level, so to speak. And a couple of councillors had mentioned their economic development strategy. And of course, uh, there, there is within our economic development strategy, a proposal, um, with regards to food supply that, in my view, is best handled by our economic development strategy partners. Uh, and in this particular instance, we have like the Chamber of Commerce who would be partnering with, um, with, uh, our primary producers around the city to, uh, uh, export our primary produce or develop our primary produce. So I was looking at a, a lower level rather than a higher level. Uh, but I'm supportive of this resolution, if only to, um, identify the issue. Because in my view, uh, some councillors themselves are struggling to identify just what this is all about. And I'm not even convinced at this stage that council should be involved in it because I think there are better people, uh, who are better placed, uh, to be able to, uh, advise, um, ratepayers, city residents on food issues rather than the council. So I think we're sort of buying ourselves a project for some reason or other. So I would support this, um, resolution, if only, uh, it will, it will clarify the issue as to who should be looking at, at the issue and indeed should, is there an issue there and should we be involved in it anyway? So, um, I will, uh, I'll support it on that basis.
Councillor Staines.
I struggle a little bit with this resolution. Um, I think we'd be hijacked a bit by the word resilience and in the food resilience forum or whatever. And, and we've got that stuck in our mind. But what I see is, yes, there are probably some people involved in that forum who are concerned, as I mentioned before, about whether the price of oil is gonna stop us getting our food and, and all those sorts of things, which are worth some thinking, but I don't think right now require huge investment in our time. But they do need some thinking. On the other hand, if we look at what has happened since we started the farmers' market, there are businesses that have, that started by being small stalls at the farmers' market that are growing. They are supplying food outside our district. In a way, it's a, it's an incubator. So within this whole food scenario, there are opportunities for us as a city. We know we've got the land. Um, a lot of it is in small blocks. Now, what better than having systems in place that, that recognise small producers who start on their small block of land, providing a specialised product that then resolves in them getting the confidence to buy some more land and grow a business out of it, which benefits our economy. So I think there's a danger we throw the baby out with the bathwater here. Um, and I'd like to think that there was an option to invest a little bit, a little bit more than nothing. And certainly from my point of view, as, as chair of the Great Dunedin Partnership, we know that food is part of our future economy. Uh, I would like to think that, uh, the economic development unit, our food business-related person is introduced to the forum and at least start to move some of the, so hear some of the discussion, debate, and start to take those things forward. Maybe that would reduce the amount of workload for the policy team who are working in some of the other areas and that we would get an outcome. So I'm just a bit concerned that by, by, uh, assigning no budget whatsoever, that we're back here in a year's time, having moved, not moved forward.
Existing resources.
Well, yeah. And, and the paper is saying that our existing res- resources mean that this, this is gonna be a struggle. Um, so if someone was interested in proposing a motion to vote a smaller sum of money than is currently being asked for, um, I'm sure that the economic development unit would also be supportive. Um, that might help even out some of the workload and even the budget could be a little smaller, but at least things started to happen. And perhaps we keep the group who've put their efforts in still interested and still contributing so that we, we get a better idea of what our opportunities might be economically out of this.
Can I just make a comment?
Councillor White. Sorry.
I just want to make a comment about, about working with economic development, just to say that this work's been developed in conjunction with colleagues in economic development. I just wanted to clarify that there isn't, um, when we say there's an occupation. when we say there's an occupancy within the policy team at the moment, to take on this work. The same relates to the Economic Development Unit. So people, so any resource that would ensure that those two groups worked together, but councillors should be aware that they don't have capacity either.
councillor Waugh.
Thank you, your worship. Just taking up on that point, Nicola, Mauricio previously, the staff are okay to do this. Is that...
With a delay, yeah. I think without a budget, you're limiting what the staff can actually do, like with no budget.
So the current priorities of the policy team are shown at the foot of page one, two, three. So that's what staff currently focusing on in the policy team.
Um, I know we're in a debate, but this is one of the things that strikes me here is that the key issue of the motion is essentially whether there's a budget or no budget assigned. So did anybody, or has anybody discussed with the food companies about possibly supporting funding or sponsoring?
Not today. And I think that's primarily a resourcing issue. We haven't had capacity to do any investigative work other than what has gone on throughout, through the Community Resilience Forum. So staff, there has to be no staff work on this today other than supporting the work that the Community Resilience Forum were doing around food.
councillor Kelvin, do you have a question? Because you will have a right to reply as the mover, but after everyone else has spoken.
The question here is, sorry, the question is, is this option as described in here true? Because it suggests that we're using existing staff resource, not that there is no resources and it can't be done, but that we're using existing staff resource. As if we've got existing staff resource, it just will be done later and might be preferable. That's what this says.
The best of my knowledge, I can answer that, yes. I think the caveats around that are that especially teams like the corporate policy team are often given work at short notice. We know that we've got other things on the horizon. So if the Local Government Act Amendment proposals go through, the council will need to develop a consultation policy by the end of the year. So there's just, I have some hesitancy around that option just because of things like that.
But it's yes. Sorry, but it's yes. That's what it's saying here is right.
councillor McTavish.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I guess the query that I was going to ask Maria has in part been answered. The query that I was going to ask Maria has in part been answered, but you're happy for me to speak to the motion?
Sure.
So councillor Staines sees the conversation has somewhat been hijacked by the word resilience. And I think that that possibly was the world's biggest understatement. I think, first of all, there seems to be a very narrow perspective on resilience around this table. The people who are participating in the forum understand resilience in the broader sense of the word. And that is not whether or not we'll get an earthquake tomorrow and how we respond, although that is a very small subset, subsection of resilience. It is about how we enable our community to be the strongest, most robust possible system that it can be in order to withstand any number of issues. So if we get a recession, a resilient city would be one that didn't significantly have a problem with that scenario. If we ended up with a major change in our demographic, a resilient city would be one that didn't suffer unduly because of that. So I think the concept around resilience being about oil shots and earthquakes, with all due respect, is a little bit narrow. In terms of the request that, or the recommendation that the Community Resilience Forum made, it recognised two different things. The first is that in what we're doing as a council, and for those who don't believe that we have, in councillor Van Der Wijss's words, we're in a poor position to pull together stakeholders in food because it's not our business. I would refer councillors to page 12, 137, which lists a long list of areas in which this council is currently involved in food. Some of those are infrastructural issues around things like parks and reserves, road reserves, things like that. Some of them are regulatory issues, like environmental health issues, local licensing, things like that. Some of them are what we've watched the Local Government Act in terms of local services, local public services. So that's economic development issues, community development issues amongst a wide range of other things. And they're listed there on page 12, 137. The Local Government Act, the new purpose statement, says that we need to be conducting those services in a good quality fashion. That is, in a fashion that is most effective, most efficient for, I think, businesses and rate payers and in a manner that we know is appropriate to both present and future circumstances. What became quite clear, and I don't want to put too fine a point on this, but I feel like I have to, what became quite clear through that community resilience process is that for me as a councillor, I simply cannot say that we are doing that when it comes to food across the board. There are ways in which, I think it could be interpreted that we are being inefficient. I think it could be interpreted that we are being ineffective. I think it could be interpreted that we are doing things in a manner which is not appropriate to current or future circumstances. I'm not quite sure how much more clearly I can paint that picture, but that is the case. And for us to delay action on that until October because we're not willing to put in fifteen thousand dollars to deal with the issue seems to me a little bit problematic, just putting it out there. In terms of whether or not the goals of this proposal are clear enough, I'm sorry if they're not, but I think that the point, the point around that is that it's not the Community Resilience Forum's job to go through and identify what the goals of a project in this space would look like. We've clearly said that there is an issue around internal collaboration and capacity as an organisation and alignment of the goals of each department in this area. That's a clear problem. Solving that problem would be one of the goals of this particular project. In addition, it has identified some potential opportunities if we work with stakeholders, to identify those opportunities and to identify a way forward on that. Clearly to me, that is a goal, would be that you had that engagement, you identified those opportunities and you reported back on what those might be. Perhaps it's not clear enough a goal. I would suggest that through the initial work, if we were of a mind to fund it, potential goals around those opportunities and challenges would be more clearly articulated. And we, as a council, could determine whether or not we saw a role for us in fixing some of the problems and maximising some of those opportunities. So in summary, I do find it quite frustrating that there is a lack of, perhaps it's my fault, perhaps I'm not articulating this clearly enough, but I think that there are so many opportunities in this space. There are real issues with the way that we are currently operating and that we are so siloed in the way that we interface with food. I don't believe that is delivering value for rate payers' investment. And I think that we can do better. And I would like to see us investing and doing better. And to that end, I think that fifteen thousand dollars and a point two staff resource over a year is a small price to pay for that assurance. Thank you.
councillor Noon.
Thank you, your worship. This was quite a hard act to follow. I've definitely changed my vote, but, however, I've learned over the years that you've got to stand your ground. But I'm not against people who are encouraged by others and have a noble outlook on life, like most of us in this room, that have gone out and formed this organisation and done a lot of good work to spread the cause about what this is all about. And I accept councillor McTavish is very passionate about this particular subject, just like my passion for infrastructure. However, I just feel, if I just look at, once again, the area that I represent and I look at what's happening locally and we've heard about the markets, the farmers' market, or if you take the example of the seafood, Port Chalmer Seafood Festival, which happens biannually, it's an absolute roaring success. It has economic benefits to the local community and probably the wider community. I'd suggest that there would be people that come to Dunedin for that event from further afield than the city itself. May well stay the night, who knows? But also the social interaction and just the overwhelming feel-good factor when an event like that is held. Once again, another event that's sort of got this element of promotion of food and encouraging communities to get together. The East Otago On Course Food Fest was held for the first time last February. Similar concept to the seafood festival, getting people together, promoting local-produced food, that sort of thing. Palmerston holds a food market as well, I think it's on a monthly basis. So those are the sorts of things that are actually happening. And also when you look at encouraging people to plant fruit trees, for example, well, little old Waititi didn't hang around and wait. They went out and planted fruit trees on the road reserve, unbeknown to the city. But, I mean, they are producing, they are producing fruit off a road reserve, which is effectively redundant in terms of productive land. But there are these things happening in our community. And as I say, I'm not against people getting together and promoting a good cause. And I would even be inclined to support the idea that the city would encourage or in some way provide sponsorship or whatever to bring people that would help encourage or international speakers, like this already happens with the community forum, if we were involved in that side of it, to help educate and encourage good practice that's happening throughout the world. I've got no problem with that, but like councillor Van Der Wijss, I do struggle with us taking the lead in this particular item.
So can I just clarify that the Community Resilience Forum is a council working party? It wasn't formed to look at food. It's brought other issues to the council such as energy. And they were probably behind the development of the energy plan. So just to clarify that, it's not an organisation that's being developed around food?
It doesn't exist any longer because this council hasn't been constituted that. So just to be clear.
councillor Law.
Look, the suggestion that this is about resilience has steered the conversation on. I'm not sure, but if you take out the subject for this report, take out the words resilience and food, there's not much left. My feeling is this, look, our food supply is exactly that. It's a supply and it's determined by economic drivers. And the very reason why North Otago is no longer a market garden in capital, even though it does very good vegetables, and the same with our town, is simply because it's not economically viable for them to do that. And they just can't compete with the guys in South Auckland and Pukakaua and Aotearoa that are growing carrots by the score, the guys in South Canterbury growing spuds. And, you know, we're an extremely good area exporter in this country, but the reality of it is that if I didn't grow cows or didn't grow milk, I don't have an alternative to grow rice. The reality of it is rice comes from overseas and it's determined by an economic response. If we sell their milk, they'll sell us rice. If we want rice, whatever, but that's how it works. And I always hear this argument about Dunedin City high-class soils. But at the moment, most of the soils that they refer to as high-class, the ones I've seen identified in the plan as high-class, are all just grown grass. And it's because there's not really an economic reason or a driver for anyone to do anything substantially different to that. I think quite simply, farmers' markets, yes, there are jobs derived from those things. I have no doubt about it. But I would also suggest that for a lot of people, it's a social thing to go down on the Saturday and absolutely nothing wrong with that. But if you want to go and pay fifty percent over supermarket prices for a chunk of steak or a dozen eggs, that's absolutely fine if that's what you want to do. And for the people that use those markets, often that's the prerogative and the option and they can afford to do it. And undoubtedly, in a lot of cases, they do get a bit of product. But, you know, we hear about these high-class soils out the Torrey and I think it was councillor Staines saying if someone wants to start a business. But if they want to do that, there's nothing stopping them doing that now. If it's economically viable to put in two acres of spring onions or shallots or, you know, something obscure, rice, absolutely nothing's stopping someone doing it now. The only thing that stops people doing it is it's not economically viable. Now, it's then being turned around to things in the city that we're not doing well. Well, if there's things around the areas of liquor licensing, as was suggested, or, you know, food things, all those things in the city, as I understand, all those things are budgeted for in the plan in their respective places. I just don't see a need. And so I'm going to support this because I just don't think it's worth chucking money to reinvent the wheel. But if there was something that I've completely missed, and I think there must be, but I just haven't seen any reason, you know, when it's titled up, resource and budget options for progressing community resilience on food and then resilience again. But, I mean, it's just to me, it's, I wouldn't feel comfortable spending our money doing that. So I'm going to support this.
So can I just clarify that there's not detail in the report about the issue? Because I was asked to bring a report to council on just the resource and budget options. So that's why this report is as it is?
Yeah, and I understand that, but I guess there's twice that this issue's come up since I've been a councillor. And there's no one has clearly verbalised exactly what it is. And I, so I mean, if it's about the things I've just talked about, if it is about trying to grow rice on the Torrey or whatever, I just don't get it, you know, so I'm, yeah. And I believe that supermarkets and the people that are doing that sort of thing will do it very, very well.
councillor Waugh, you asked a question before and now you wish to speak to us.
Yeah. councillor McTavish, I applaud your passion for this. But the key thing, as I mentioned on December 9th, when we debated this previously, I agree with the motion put forward by councillor Calvin Van Der Wijss. And I think, first off, we need to applaud the work the community is currently doing. And the community is doing a great job in leading in this. You know, resilient communities become stronger with increased community buy-in participation. Let's continue to support the communities. The issue that I have is that the committee groups, you know, are leading a great, doing a great role. But if we get the DCC and they're playing and guiding and taking on an active role, I believe many of the committee groups will step back, you know. Let's continue with the committee groups. Let them do their work and how they're moving forward. Grow South is a great programme. My own Rotary Club is involved in the community garden at Parkgate Park. Both the communities are doing this. They're doing a super job. So I'll be supporting it.
councillor Pete.
Thank you, your worship. The city council is never going to be a rain master in the food business, but it does have a role to play in terms of facilitating or enabling or coordinating or whatever. And I believe that we do need some resource put to this, whether we do it through a part-time position or with a small amount of money. The problem I had with the resolution before us is that it looks like it's an option to do next to nothing. Certainly nothing in the next nine months, as the report signals. And whereas I think there are opportunities and they are in the economic development areas, councillor Staines has flagged. They're also in our land use planning and in our work which we do with community groups. Some things will be spontaneous, like councillor Noon says, there are people out there who set up by themselves, it's a little karate, a community garden or an orchard or whatever. But I feel there is, we don't need to wait for a natural disaster to present us with any problems. We just look for ways of encouraging production and specialisation and particularly some commercial opportunities through food. So I'll be voting against this and be looking at around for, if it doesn't go through, for a small amount of resource. I'd likely just turn the staff now and just ask whether dollars are more important or a point two position more important in terms of advancing this idea.
I think we'd say staff resource is the most important.
thank you. councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, I am set back on this one because I had a feeling that councillor...
Yeah, I am set back on this one because I had a feeling that councillor McTavish would be able to articulate my thoughts better than me. And it wasn't proved wrong in that regard, so firstly, toe-to-toe everything that she's brought to this. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. I'm concerned with the, the re-adhering of the DCC shouldn't be involved in the food business. And I think that is a total retiring because the DCC isn't involved in the tertiary education sector and the DCC aren't venture capitalists. That's not to say that we don't recognise the value of tertiary education and growing business to our community and as such, a support that through the economic development strategy and others. And I think that's something that, that is worth bearing in mind. And councillor Lord has talked about the volume of primary produce we have on our doorstep. But I think value is, is just as important. And if we're looking at low weight, high value exports, then there are huge opportunities being presented to us in this field. Just as one example, in 2010, the global, the, the global market for organic produce was around $59 billion US dollars and that's expected to grow to about $105 billion US by the year 2015. In contrast, New Zealand's organic market, our slice of that in 2012 was $350 million New Zealand dollars. You don't have to be a maths professor to figure out that we can, should we contribute more effort in this space, claim, I think. We have the potential to claim far more of that. So just, I mean, so I just thought I'd flag that up and I appreciate councillor's concerns around the fact that we would like more information and we would like more work done on this area. But I have no confidence that without resourcing that work, that work will ever happen. And, and as councillor Wilson and others pointed out, would be here in 12 months' time having this exact same conversation because we have a stretched policy team with a full slate of priorities to deal with before we get to this. So I don't think this motion achieves anything at all frankly in addressing the concerns raised by those, some of those who are, who are pushing for it. So I'll be voting against this and as others have pointed out, would be open to voting on a subsequent motion should it, should it have the opportunity to allocate some resourcing to this.
Right. I, for my part, I, I can't support this motion. I think that it has been clear that the issues around food are both internal to the operations of council and how we do things and councillor McTavish has talked about the needs there and external. And I think that lots of opportunities, lots of challenges and lots of needs have been identified potentially. But we don't know a great deal about their full potential as yet. And really, any resource we put in or not, is about investigating the opportunities, the challenges and the needs. There's already a great deal of goodwill in the community to address that. And going back to something councillor Vandevos mentioned about the big food distributors. They have been actively and positively engaging on this and asking to engage with council on this up till now. But, but we haven't had the resource to engage with them properly. There's already been a great, there's already been a great deal of goodwill in the community and activity around this. Most specifically at food forum. So there's already conversations going on, there's already quite a lot of collaboration. But it's not coordinated. And all that a small amount of funding would achieve is just pulling some of that together and peeling back the onion a bit, no, unintended, and finding out a bit more about what those opportunities are. And the beauty of, from my point of view, is that it only takes a small investment. We are, I'd go back to particularly in economic development where we threw tens of thousands of dollars from time to time at individual firms, thinking that it might create two jobs and it usually didn't. And as I was reminded when I first came onto council, someone pointed out to me that the longest debates would be about the smallest amounts of money. And that has proven to be the case. We spend hundreds of thousands on all sorts of things that we have in the past. We're not doing it anywhere near as much as we used to. But we put considerable amounts of money into things at times. And for, I see a huge potential benefit from a very small investment here in supporting what the community has, is already doing. And I referred to councillor Wiley talked about the admirable efforts that have been put into community gardens etc around the city. In fact, the council has had quite an involvement with those. And with less and less resource, we won't even be able to do that. So we are already involved in this and already involved in the opportunities, but we're not able to take them up because, just because of a very small amount of resource. So I would prefer to see a very small amount of resource put in that would give us incredible dividends in terms of finding out what the opportunities are ahead of us. Councillor Calvert, your right reply.
Thank you. I think part of the problem here, when somebody mentions resilience as a word being part of the problem. I think part of the problem here is there's a lot of big work, work done by a lot of people and still we're at a point where it doesn't seem to me that we've got in front of us a proposition such that some of us can understand where we'd be going and what we'd be supporting. And I don't think that putting more resources into some of this will do anything more about that unless it's something specific. I don't think we're up to the point at the moment where we know specifically what options somebody's going to put to the council that we might support. My suspicion is that if what comes out of this at the end of the day, one way or the other, is say 10 things that we could be doing on a practical level, that council might support, that are community initiatives or something. We'd probably agree reasonably wholeheartedly on almost all of them. But at the moment, this is what I've had the most emails and things about of any issue. And if I sit here today and support something that says that it is, for example, to coordinate across council group to ensure more joined-up thinking and decision-making around existing work programmes relating to food. I'm just going to be destroyed by the people who don't think that the DCC should have involvement in our food chain. Now, it's not that I don't think that we shouldn't be doing some things, but we still have a lot of words going on here that are aspirational, for want of a better word, and that don't, aren't able to be brought before the council for are these sort of things we are charged as a council to do or not? And I'm hoping that within council, we can do some work so we at least can get to that stage. But I don't want to spend any council money apart from in-house resources to get to the point where somebody can put in front of us things like, are we going to put budgets into a community garden somewhere to help the community who's already going to do all the work? That sort of thing, that I can get my head around. These other words to me remain aspirational and I don't totally understand them. And once we get into it, they might, everything we do is related to food, something in, something out. We could be doing all sorts of things. And I think we need specific things if we're expected as a council to be funding them, supporting them, doing something with them. We need something reduced to something that isn't any longer aspirational but is particular. Things and putting some more money into getting more words that say things like coordinating across council group to ensure more joined-up thinking doesn't help me anywhere. So that's why this is the motion.
Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Could I show of hands, please? All those who support the motion, could they raise their hand? All those against the motion, please raise their hand? So it's lost. We have two options. We can formulate an alternative motion now or we can go and have some food. Oh, that's easy.
I think we can do that before we have enough resilience. I don't think we have enough resilience.
I think what I will do is call lunch and we will, and I don't think, I, I appreciate that there may not be a great deal of debate because the very good debate has already happened and on the same issues. But some, I just suggest that someone brings an alternative motion to the table immediately after lunch, which will be at, after lunch will be at two o'clock. Now, still on this issue, there's, there's a motion on the, on the wall. Is there a second for this motion? Councillor Pete? I fervently trust that we will not need to debate this. We debated the previous one, but let's see. Unless, of course, someone has something really novel and new to add. Councillor Hawkins, would you like to speak to this in the first instance?
Yeah, just briefly, and I don't want to reiterate this debate at all. But my, my biggest issue with option one and the feeling I got from others who voted against it is that essentially, we don't have the staff resourcing presently to advance this work to any meaningful level. The reason I'm proposing going to go for option three is because even option two, which would allocate a budget, that's all very well, aside from the fact that the current staff don't have the time to use that budget. So I propose as per the motion that we allocate, well, for the purpose of consultation, that we allocate point two, 0.2 staff resourcing to this.
Councillor Carr?
There's been a suggestion, I think, that we have some idea of what that amount would be. Can we, as a matter of background, have that additional report if that was the case in here? I mean, some, I think it was a suggestion that it was $22,300 or some amount. So that provides, you know, can, can we have had that included in first? And secondly, something about money in there? Because here, here we're in the annual what amounts to what we're going to spend. We don't have any spending indication in this at all. So I'd like to see partly the report being amended and partly, and, and that's up to the mover and second of course. But I couldn't be voting for anything that doesn't have any amount in it to, to be consulted on.
Now, the figure was $22,000 given by staff during the previous question.
I think, I think the point that councillor Calvert's made, that's a good one, is that we've got the figure in there.
I'm happy for that so long as we can get an assurance from staff that they're confident that that is all that we're required.
That's based on grade 16 post, so that's what we think is about appropriate level.
Okay, you're happy to include it, councillor Pete?
I agree.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else, councillor Calvert? You fit, no, you don't.
Yeah, there was a sort of another question of the people who put the option, whether they, and this isn't probably the right way to do it, but whether they would consider including one and three as things to consult on? Or whether they're wedded to only having a three or nothing?
I'm sorry, so, so you have to put an option in and then you can consult on as many of the other options as you choose, if you, if you want to. So you can, in a resolution, say, we would also like to, through the end of plan, consult on options number. Which is, so you're putting option three in and we would also like to consult on options.
Can I suggest, however, that if option three, if this, if that's what was decided by council, were to go in the draft plan and it were explained even reasonably, then the other option is one, which is not do option three. So it's, it's almost as if you don't need to really fully explain it. But it should be explained fully in the consultation documents. Councillor Benson? Oh, you know, councillor McTavish?
Just a query for the mover and second. There's a reference there to the need for collaboration between the Economic Development Unit and Corporate Policy. The work of the forum identified the need for a collaborative approach across all council departments that currently interface on food. Does this motion specifically exclude those other departments? Or is it simply that the work would be posted by people from?
And others.
And others?
I would be happier if it, among other aspects.
It certainly wasn't my intention to narrow the scope of the work as that could suggest.
I, I'd assume this sort of referred to the ownership of the work, if you like. But then the work itself is to put all of the departments together.
Perfect, thank you.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, just my apologies for not being present for the earlier vote. I was on council business, I just wished it, but, and I'd indicated that I would have supported the earlier motion. But I think that given that it was council's will not support the early motion, I would feel quite uncomfortable about then attempting to re-litigate it through opposing this. And I think, you know, council's expressed a will, the only thing we're talking about now is the amount. And I'm comfortable with it, given the will, but it's been expressed and the amount is not excessive, so I'll support the motion.
Councillor Vandevos?
I, I still don't feel at all easy about this. And I'm wondering, this $22,500 that's going towards staff resource, are you going to go out and hire somebody part-time or are you going to give somebody overtime? How, how, how does that work?
We'd hire someone.
You'd just hire someone part-time and have you got someone in mind for that?
Not especially, but I think there are a number of people in the city who'd be interested in that role.
Right, okay, this is where it gets, it gets even trickier for me. So we in question time or debate here?
We're in debate.
Okay. The, the claim, and we hear it pretty often these days, that we don't have the staff resourcing. We've got between 600 and 700 staff here, many of whom are doing all sorts of, I'm sure, dedicated work, but from a rate payer point of view, not something that's urgent or perhaps even needs to be done. And I'm worried that this is basically just a way of extending the number of staff that we have when what is plain to me as a business person is what we need to do is address, we reduce the number of staff that we have. We run a bureaucracy that is costing us over $100 million a year at a time when we're already $600 million in debt. And to be suggesting that we can actually raise service levels and increase the number of staff, be it part-timers or whatever, to me is, is, is really, really difficult. Now, I, I've got no doubt that there's some high and mighty sort of ideals behind this and that there'd be some, perhaps even some positive things to come out of it. But are we really in a position where we can start saying, we don't have to start resourcing, we're going to employ more people? If the hundreds of staff that we already have are able to do the job, then I don't believe it's a job that we need to be doing. I'll be voting against it.
Councillor Calvert, you've already spoken.
I thought that was a question, now I'm now allowed to say something?
No, no, I'm speaking to the issue. I, I will, I, on previous occasion, I allowed you to speak out outside of standing orders because I realised you hadn't realised that I was the last speaker. But it is one speaker per, one, you have one speaking opportunity per round.
Can I speak out here?
No. That's what I was trying to delegate, to say. Anyone else? Councillor New?
I think I've got to speak on behalf of councillor Calvert, like councillor McTavish did the other day. Because I don't think councillor McTavish would pass on the same view as councillor Calvert. Sorry, I shouldn't say that. My apology. Look, I'm not going to change my view on this one. And I still feel that when we originally started this discussion, I think chief executive and councillor Vandevos and possibly councillor Thompson talked about the, the cultural change within the organisation, having the focus on, because we are still talking about energy here, oh no, we're not, food resilience, sorry. I've lost my train of thought for a moment. I'm still not going to change my view, but the, the reality is, the debate that we had before... But the, the reality is, the debate that we had before, even though councillor Thompson has made the point that it is the council's view by majority that, that first motion failed, I still feel that we, that we shouldn't be heading down this track with additional funding, budget lines are tight. I still don't believe that it is a high enough priority to initiate. Even though as a point two FTE staff member, I still think there are other priorities that should be given, additional staff resource other than this one.
councillor Pete.
Thank you, your worship. I seconded this resolution because I think it has merit in its own rights. I'm not going to go over what I said earlier. But I also believe that it actually is better than the previous one, if only because it will hopefully attract more rigorous submissions, either for or against. And I think that's important to have that. Whereas I don't think the earlier, earlier resolution actually would have, would have attracted as much debate.
councillor Wylie.
Thank you, your worship. The big issue I have with this motion is I think we're just starting a snowball again. I think the, we start this year at twenty-two thousand. Next year we'll be back here being asked for sixty thousand in solvent. Again, I stress, the community's done a great job in this area and the community should be championing the area.
councillor Wilson.
I was supporting this because I, for the very reasons that councillor Wylie just said, the community have assisted to do it. And the community want us to be coordinating and assisting in understanding our food and the opportunities that go with it. They see that there are opportunities if we get in behind it, creating jobs and economic development. And that's why I will be supporting it, because I do care about jobs in the city.
councillor Benson-Parker.
I suppose I do support this, but I'm just concerned that in the narrative, not, I'm not suggesting amendment, but in the narrative around the consultation on this, that we do take out, that's the total cost, not. So that we don't encourage people to multiply twenty-two thousand by five to find out what a DCC staff member earns.
I shall be supporting this. And I guess the only thing I would add to what has already been said is that where council feels that it's important to support something in the community for the benefit of the community, we have spent money. And I would point out that we spend more than this, sometimes giving rates relief to one heritage building. Because we, community values those buildings and we recognise that value. So I don't think this is out of order. And just reflecting on councillor Wylie's comment that it could expand, you know, blow out. We, anything, any extra would be before this table. So I think that it will not be, it's not something we're putting in there that grows on time. We would contain this. councillor Hawkins, do you wish to, so you wrote a file? All right, put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Could I have a show of hands as before, please? All those in favour, please raise their hand. It's carried. Now, that was the last report in that section, if I'm not mistaken. So I will move from the chair, the three recommendations in, on the decision paper, in this case relating to corporate departments, seconded council's stains. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. So we're now on to, thank you, thank you, thank you, Marine. We're on to draft financial statements and related information, section eleven, folder pages one point, eleven point one to eleven point four, five. I'll just go through those lines. So just let me know if, if there's anything you wish to address. Draft financial, inflation adjusted income statement. That's on page eleven point one. Inflation adjusted estimate of comprehensive income. Inflation adjusted estimate of movement in equity, ten point two. councillor Thompson.
Just one question I have, and it, it may just be, this is the way we do it, but the cash flow hedge reserves, the, that don't, that don't change. I mean, it's that subject advice, they do fluctuate from year to year, and we haven't got a clue whether they all fluctuate.
Correct.
The only thing I ask, question, sorry, answer it is, my understanding is that, to the extent that interest rates rise over the next few years, we are likely to see a positive movement in those futures. Should we be showing that, so I know it doesn't fit this account quite, but.
Yeah, three worship, that is correct. But I can't agenda that further and come back to you.
councillor Wilson.
I think I'm going back with apologies, your worship. But just in the inflation adjusted income statement, and I didn't perhaps read every single word in this section, but I'm just wondering, the assumptions as to what those inflation rates are going forward, where are they? And, I, I, it's in the next section?
Yes.
Are they, but are they standard, but they're, so they're standard right throughout? It's just understanding, I mean, they don't quite ever work like that. They tend to go up and down. And it's just understanding, if that picture could, could be painted. When we produce this, we often, and this is probably Lee's point often, is showing a picture is much better than a, saying a lot of words. And I'm quite interested in understanding the risk analysis around that assumption being wrong. What it looks like if it's ten percent, perhaps? Or is that a difficult thing to understand?
Um, three worship, so you'd be looking at a scenario?
Yeah.
Type picture? We can certainly look at doing something along those lines.
Because that's, I mean, if it's ten percent, it's good for income, but it's also quite risky for debt and things. We hate, yeah, working, yeah.
Well, to the extent that that, we've already got that debt, then whatever inflation is, won't impact on it. But certainly changes in interest rates could.
Yeah. I don't know, I just.
I'm not sure that we could do something for this draft plan, but it's something we could look at certainly for the LTP, having those sorts of, those risks and, and looking at the consequences of dramatic changes in our assumptions.
Yeah, thank you.
councillor McTavish.
Just to clarify, my reading of the assumptions was that we're planning on a seven percent kind of average interest rate for the foreseeable, is that right?
Correct.
And currently on some of our newer loans, we are only planning about five percent?
So any new loans that we'd be taking out, that would be a floating rate? And the rate would be lower than that, yes? So that's the first rate?
Most of our interest is going to be around that seven percent.
So that's our average assumption at the moment, yes?
Okay, and the recent indicators that we've been getting from some apartments etcetera, that we're going to see an increase in interest rates. That increases from the current five percent, perhaps up to seven, that's, that's how it's all looking.
Yes, so we'll be looking at reviewing that assumption before we adopt the final plan and we'll report back on that to you in, in May.
Right, thank you. I was, I was just going to say, it seems quite reasonable at the moment. If we adopted a five percent, I'd be saying, well, hang on, I mean, it might be five now, but it doesn't look like that's going to stay that way. Given that a seven is, is what we've picked it at, it seems reasonable from the assumption.
The next line is public equity. Inflation adjusted balance sheet. Inflation adjusted cash flow statement. Forecast financial statements notes.
Just a query. I, I think that's where we're up to. I'm looking at eleven seven, which is the significant forecasting assumptions. And the population growth projections, which are incorporated into the, have they already been anticipated before the, before the work was done and presented to us two days ago? Or does that need to be done?
No, that, as it was explained during the development contributions section, the stats New Zealand had put up their updated population estimates to allow us to do that.
But the models that we adopted were for, based on the two thousand and six census with purposes of development contributions. Okay, so just for the purposes of development contribution, they weren't affected at all?
We will have updated population estimates for the LTP.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's fine, thank you.
So councillor McTavish, just a second line on page eleven point four, other revenue. Is that mainly fees that look like going up sort of stepwise, have you read them?
Um, three worship, yes, that would be fees and that would also be our NZTA subsidies. And so they'll be inflated using the BRRRR assumptions.
Right, so is that increased this inflation? Or are we assuming we're going to get greater NZTA subsidies? Because my understanding is that we could look forward to, in fact, lessening away the NZTA subsidies and to be boosting this by, you know, three million a year all the way through. Looks to me like we've got off a business.
Yes, so our assumptions in these budgets are, at the moment, status quo in terms of NZTA subsidies. What changes our revenue line varies depending on our capital expenditure programme. So that is what causes some of that fluctuation. But most of the change will be BRRRR inflation.
This is other revenue that I'm looking at in particular. And you've said that that's basically fees and NZTA.
Yes.
So does this assume that we're just going to keep raising the fees by three million a year? Or that we're going to get NZTA, extra three million a year?
Um, it's both, so there'll be inflation on the NZTA as well as inflation on our fees. And as I said, the, in some cases, the NZTA revenue varies depending on what our capital expenditure programme has in it.
So are you saying these changes are simply a pure, purely a hundred percent of BRRRR adjustment all the way through?
There's a BRRRR adjustment and some, and some of the year-on-year changes are dependent on what our capital expenditure programme has for NZTA subsidies. So it's not a same number each year.
But what I sense you're asking is, are we planning to put up fees faster than inflation?
Yes.
Carolyn's answer is no.
Okay.
Carolyn, can you just confirm? Nothing in this, nothing in that other revenue is putting up fees faster than inflation. We're not disguising our rates by putting up fees at a faster rate.
Thank you for going straight to the main.
Your worship, can I just clarify, there's a question asked on Friday of eroding people and around what assumptions they had put on their budgets around the NZTA subsidy. And my recollection was that they had put in at fifty percent, which was the lower end.
Oh, that project, oh, that was just for the Heron to be on, so I'll wait.
councillor Wilson.
Well, the next question from that is, then the assumption is, for these ones, that it's at the, I think, sixty, the fifty-eight, sixty. It's at a higher rate than what we may expect it to be, under the percentages at the moment.
Current percentage, it's about fifty-six percent.
It's different at the moment, yeah.
Yeah, but if NZTA reduces the funding, that figure will go down.
And, and so will our planned spend. And so everything will be adjusted in line and we'll be coming back to you around a new, a new capital spend, a new programme in the light of that change. So again, we won't just rate to cover the difference, or?
Your worship, councillor McTavish, on eleven point five, under the landfill after care. Probably question for Carolyn. It peters out in twenty-one, twenty-two, this, twenty-twenty-three is when the Green Island landfill closes. So obviously the land care or after care kicks in then. So I assume there's a, a jar accumulating to carry on the work that's required post-closure.
Yes, there is, yeah.
Right. Next line is insurance. Eleven point one sec, sorry.
Can I just?
I have a question with regard to that, sorry. And that is, we, we've got, we've got that strategic risk fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in place. And I've got two questions around it. Where does that sit currently? Because to the extent that it's self-insurance, one would expect to be able to identify it as a kind of a chocolate box of money that we're not able to spend or something else. And secondly, I'm unclear as to whether there was an intention to add to it on a progressive basis, which is the normal assumption with self-insurance. And I'm not sure that that's going to, so I've got those two questions.
Marine, would you like to address those, please?
Three worship, yes, there is a separate investment and it's been invested with city treasury and with some interest accumulation. And that's going into the finance insurance line, revenue line. The original intention, I think, was that it was to be added to. But that first two hundred and fifty thousand was achieved through a saving premium. And we've never realised those savings and premiums since then. And so it's just set at that level and you have to make some decisions around insurance.
Well, I, I guess I've got discomfort about that. I'm not too concerned about it in the fourteen, fifteen financial year. To the extent that if we get a Christchurch cheese quake tomorrow, it's going to make back a little difference whether it's two hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand. So I'm, I'm comfortable that we don't necessarily do it right now. But I think we've got to look at that as a, as an issue of principle, particularly around fifteen, sixteen and ongoing. Because otherwise, we might as well not have bought it with the two hundred and fifty thousand, frankly.
Yeah, it is the intention that we will be reviewing insurance. And with the CFA on board now, who's got some experience in this area, we have a good attachment to that.
councillor McTavish.
Your worship, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you a lenience. There are two issues I would like to raise in the significant forecasting assumptions section which preceded this one. And one of them just rounds off the conversation about NZTA subsidies. The CEO has pointed out that any revision in bar rates would result in a revised programme coming forward. It wouldn't simply be added on to rates. And I just wonder whether that's worth adding to page eleven, twelve, where it does talk about the fact that a far review has been undertaken. Then it says, no provision has been made for any changes that may arise from this. And if anyone was reading that, they may not necessarily intuit that our transport plan would be, yeah.
Yes, well, we're not that.
And the other one, just as reference to page, the last page, page eleven sixteen, which talks about coastal erosion. In the chief, or the former chief executive's pre-election report, he highlighted in particular the erosion at St. Clair as being a potential issue for the council, a significant risk factor. I think here, identifying the stadium, the, the, the links at clear and maybe one or two others maybe scattered from ports. I just wonder whether or not we need to be, or whether or not there is merit in identifying and just speaking to some of those key risks that were identified in the chief executive's summary in this, in, in how we are, what assumptions we are making around those key risks.
Yes, do that.
Thank you.
councillor Kelvin, oh, sorry, councillor Vanus, need you, councillor Kelvin?
Yeah, while, while we're on significant assumptions, there was a, a little picture that I had on eleven point eight, and that's regarding the, your city, our future community consultation. That indicated that there's ongoing support for range services and little desire for reduced service levels. Certainly, the community consultation through that said, there was little desire for reduced service levels. Is it therefore the assumption that the whole community has little desire for reduced service levels or sees little need for them? Is this really a fundamental assumption? Or is this just something that came out of the your city, our future?
We, we went out to the community, Jane will remember the, the forum that we used. But we went out to the community and consulted on a whole raft of things. We said to the community, on a scale of one to five, would you like us to do more of it? Do you think we've got it about right? There's three, and we'd like us to do less. But the other one around one was do less, five was do more, and three was, we think we've got it about right. It would have to be said that almost nothing, but the lowest scoring item was two point nine nine, which would suggest we had that one about right. And everything else was, we'd like you to do more of it. It's pretty hard to, pretty hard to get unanimity across or to get a consensus of things that we should do less of as a body, but the joy is that that's your job.
Right, the point I was going to make was though, that the assumption that there is little desire for reduced service levels is always going to be there as long as you ask the question in that way of the group that you ask. If you ask particular pressure groups or whatever, they want more of something.
We asked the whole city, I think, we asked the whole city, so there was a wide, a wide question that we need to all house up.
This was done in two phases, it was done through the Your City, Our Future and also the LTP.
Okay, thank you. And then, I mean, can I just say that the assumptions this time around seem to me generally, apart from little quirks like that, be far more reasonable than what we've had in the past. And in the past annual plans that I've looked through, that I found the assumptions quite frankly frightening, most of these I actually find to be much more reasonable, except for the one at the bottom of eleven point eleven, which is the foresight for stadium operating results. And the level of uncertainty regarding the ability to pay rentals and meet private sector loan requirements, et cetera, is low.
I thought it's always been low in your mind, you never expect it, it's quite rare.
I think this one here, councillor Van der Sneeven, is discussed on Thursday morning. The budget that is in the annual plan is based on these assumptions. We're clear that that is presenting some challenges and we will be coming back to you with the statement of intent around the stadium, which will come to you before you sign off the final version of this annual plan, at which point we will have a little clarity around the size of, the size of the gap and we, we may be able to make some changes, but this was key on Thursday, what's in here is a budget where those assumptions are in place, although we know that they are not possible.
So instead of low in that box now, should we not put unknown, given the fluid nature of budgets to come back?
I guess at this point in time with the annual plan, as it looks right now, those are the assumptions that build it together. By the end of February, we may be able to change those assumptions with something that has further clarity.
So we keep a watching brief?
Keep a watching brief.
Thank you. Councillor Kel.
I'd just like to ask a question around eleven point sixteen, the assumption that projected income from property sales will be realised, calling that income, does that mean where property developers or something that selling a capital item would, is turned into income instead of capital, or have I missed something there? This thing number one, it's described as income usually.
Yes.
Carolyn, can you help with that?
I'm sorry, can you just clarify your question for me? So the assumption there is there are some sales in our budgets?
Is it?
Usually it's a sales proceeds.
Yep, sales proceeds would be more appropriate.
Right, so that's not actually income.
No.
That's a relief. It being a taxable item sort of in a.
Yes, we'll change the word to proceeds.
The second thing is, from that, I presume that there is projected particular properties that are intended for sale?
So probably meant to talk to you about portfolio of non-strategic assets?
Yes, sorry, I wasn't, oh, that's right, I was going to ask my question.
Yes, so there is, there is budget being added, there is a position being added to the budget to be quite specifically a person that does all of the work required about identifying those properties, coordinating with departments, making sure processes are followed to put them on the market, to realise them and that they will pay for itself, but so there was a plan of property sales ahead of us for non-strategic assets.
But the assumption here is that we know how much they are because this is suggesting that an assumption is that it will realise the amount we expect, which means that we must know at least the value of what we would be proposing to sell.
Well, except the amount that we expect in their statements is zero at the moment, so we're reasonably safe.
So level of uncertainty should really sort of be none, that there are no sales.
We did have some discussion about this on.
That's fine, I'll just catch up with that. Cool, thank you.
Right, that is councillor.
Oh, sorry, have we done with insurance?
Not necessarily, if you want to ask.
Yeah, if we were to go to a even more self-insuring model, would that have any repercussions with the likes of S and P, F and P or would it in any way affect borrowings?
I can give a general comment, all right, yes, this junior double and that by S faces and what's insured for, so the issue you're going to, the area you're going to get premium reduction is if you increase your deductible, perhaps the country's dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, you might have taken that higher possibility, and that's when you'll get a reduction in the premium, but that's not likely to have an impact.
With this on the.
This is the.
So in terms of.
The issue that we've got really is what is being insured and what is not being insured.
So in terms of finding a balance between what we pay for interest and what we do with insurance, they're not anywhere near conflicted as this thing.
No, but the other issue I've got is the risk profile of organisations and what you can store as an appropriate deductible, other organisations have high deductibles and some others have smaller, and then you can take insurance to a different market, if you've got a high deductible, some international markets find it more attractive.
The other issue councillor Van der Sneeven, this is one that you've raised previously, which was the issue around the uncalled capital. So we have a margin, a considerable margin in our uncalled capital, that's pre-arranged debt that we could raise if we need it, we have no call for it, but if there were to be a major event or an international credit crisis or something, and we were not able suddenly for those kinds of reasons to raise new debt, we have a committed facility where they can't back out of, but they have to lend us, so at the moment that is around, as you pointed out, two hundred million dollars over our current debt level, that sits over here, it's pre-committed to, and the lending agencies can't back away from that if suddenly we are unable to borrow money for some other reason. So that adds to our liquidity, which is also what gives some confidence to stand and pause about taking us off negative outlook.
Okay, and that other reason could be, for instance, the sea eating away at South London through the sea wall or an earthquake or?
Oh, yes, yes, that's right, so if there was a monumental issue that happened and suddenly we found it hard to raise credit, to raise debts, to replace our existing debt of a which about a hundred million across the whole group comes up for re-fixing each year, we have a facility over there that would enable us to do that, which gives us that headroom to sort the issues out.
Okay.
Cost us nothing, hold it, just it's.
Right, I understand there's no holding cost, there's the setup cost, would there not also be an argument however, that if we didn't have this on call two hundred million dollar plus capital, that in the event of an earthquake or a tsunami or whatever, then the government would be much more obliged to step in and we wouldn't have to bear the costs ourselves, I forget, Christchurch for instance, surely having this two hundred million extra on call actually represents a risk to the needed in the case of an extraordinary event, rather than, the government would then not have to step into? Or was there some other reason for having it other than natural disaster like a tsunami or?
In an international credit crisis, for example, where debt suddenly became very difficult to raise internationally, as has been recently the case, I don't imagine the government is going to be able to step in for every city council that's needing to raise debt, so that was one where we would not be covered. It's the view of our Treasury Department that this is a prudent way, given as you say, the cost to set up, the cost, there is no ongoing cost to hold, and certainly I can't draw it down without coming back to council, so it's not money that's just available to be played with, if you like. Certainly the view of the Treasury and within the discussions of standing causes is that that's a prudent facility to have for the council.
So apart from financial disaster worldwide or a natural disaster, you don't anticipate any other need for, there's no other agenda for the two hundred million?
I give you my word, I do not have a two hundred million dollar capital building project tucked away up my sleeve.
Good, thank you very much for that.
Councillor Stafford.
So we were insurance, then on the BRRRR price level change, change, justice update. Summary of Revenue and Financing Policy, eleven point four five. Okay, that's all those lines. The next report, T, is the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen baking method, the report for this referred to pages twelve point one zero five to twelve point one one eight. And you'll see there the recommendations around the regions. And yes, and choices, so in the first instance, I'll just open it up, questions of Carolyn.
I'm going to hold draw.
So questions, councillors?
Councillor McTavish. Just in relation to the work of the RAC funding working party. I'm just, I'm interested in the report back from the, on the tourism economic development targeted rate. You guys obviously met and discussed that in quite some detail and came to the perspective that it was difficult to identify anyone that benefited over above public. To me, that calls into question why we have a targeted rate for economic development that we then offset using a reduction in the general rate. If there is no group that benefits over and above the public in that regard, who are the people that have their targeted rate applied and then offset? And does that group no longer, should that group no longer stand?
Two sides to that, councillor McTavish, one, we, the discussion was around specific targeted rates, so for instance, the targeted rate on the tourism sector to help fund tourism is one way of looking at it, and it was felt that in those situations, the targeted rate, it's difficult to define who the beneficiaries are of the funding that you are raising, and they're the ones you must target.
So just to, I understand that, but what I, what I understand perhaps inaccurately is that we already have a group which is ring fenced, which has a targeted.
But that is for the entire economic development, so it covers, it's rated over all commercial businesses and it covers all aspects of economic development, so that one, that fund could be increased. If there was a major activity that we wish to undertake in economic development, we could consult on, or put out for consultation and increase in the economic development rate that is, target of rate that is different to the increased other rates. So the facility exists, but we haven't used it, and it was established by taking money from the general rate on commercial businesses and isolating it into the targeted position, and that gives us assurance, I guess, that the, I think it's half a million dollars sits in that targeted rate, that half million dollars must be spent on economic development activities, it can't be spent on any other activity that the general rate covers.
Okay, yeah.
So we could increase it, it does exist.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, I guess it's an option, I suppose, for us to consider in the event that after this financial year, it is identified that the current economic development strategy budget is not sufficient to meet demand, yeah, but my query was really around just the wording of the answer here seemed to indicate that that group couldn't be identified when actually we've already identified it.
For the overall, the one that exists now, it's a pretty easy equation to know who are the beneficiaries, because it goes across all commercial activity businesses, so it's when you start to come down and say we wish to target the specific group of people, that you, you have to, you have to understand who are the beneficiaries well enough to define those people and therefore rate them, and that's been difficult in some of the areas that we've looked at using a targeted rate.
Councillor Van der Sneeven.
On pages one, twelve one oh six and twelve one oh seven, it was referenced to foresight for stadium and its special differential. On one oh seven, capital value of a hundred and fifty-three million, does that square the two hundred and twenty-four million valuation that we have of the place?
The two hundred and twenty-four million dollar Price Waterhouse Cooper's figure is a total of the spend, it's not, it's not a valuation, I understand, is that right, hon?
It's not, this is the rating and valuation.
I understand that the total spend and the valuation came to within very, very small approximation of each other.
I'd have to go away and have a look at that, I don't know what valuation you're referring to, assuming the theme by Price Waterhouse Cooper's is two hundred and twenty-four or something. If you're excluding things out the road.
Right, so is this a government valuation?
Yes, the valuation listed here is the ration value, so quarter value.
So there's a big difference.
So can I?
Yes.
No, just a related question, we, we, because the stadium was going to pay the rate that was going to make it completely unaffordable, we adjusted the, well, we adjusted it to represent the value of the property that had been, that it replaced, and I want, I just made an assumption, which may be incorrect, that the capital value in this instance is in fact not the valuation of the stadium, but the valuation of the property that it replaced.
Well, it is the rateable value, on page twelve, one one four, it talks about the differential that the council has put in place for the stadium, so the rates for the foresight for stadium aren't actually based on that value, they're based, as councillor Thompson indicated, on what the rates would have been if the stadium hadn't been built. We inflation adjusted it last year and one of the proposals in there is to increase.
I remember that that's why we came up with a point eight differential, but the value here is definitely not what the value of previous properties were, and it's definitely not what the valuation of the stadium currently is, it's some arbitrary point in the government have come up with, is that unfair?
But I guess I'd need to look into that and just check what the other valuations were, but this is the one that quarter value put together for rating purposes.
On one oh six, we've got options of either incorporating an increase in the CPI or whatever the overall rate increase is going to be on, on, on the rates. To me, this is just subsequent awkwardness to actually being a bit dishonest about finding yet another way of subsidising the stadium. To me, what we should be doing with rates, commercial or otherwise, is we should be trying to get the rate to have some kind of recognition of the services supplied, and we've always heavily rated commercial enterprises in favour of residential because there's a lot more residents voting basically, but we are in the process very slowly of trying to get that differential more aligned and try to get rates to more accurately reflect the services that we're supplying, and I applaud that, I don't think it's happening half quickly enough, but it's, we've gone the other way however with the stadium. The stadium has got enormous infrastructure that we are paying for in order to make it operate, it's got enormous electricity supplies, it's got massive transformers on every corner of it, it's got a big water supply, it's got, we've had a lot of roading infrastructure, the thing that we should be charging the stadium for is actually its commercial rate, which is, I believe, one point six million dollars more than what we are actually charging. Now, by offering this, this rate, we then don't have to subsidise them by one point six million because we know they're never going to make any money anyway, but wouldn't it be more honest of us, given that we're already giving them a four hundred thousand dollar fee for annual fee to look for events, events fund, we're giving them a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar something or other to counteract the fact that they've spent more than three million than they should have last year, wouldn't it be more honest of us? Wouldn't it be more honest of us to simply give them a bigger lump to cover the fact that they can't pay things, rather than just have this completely arbitrary tiny rates demand when in fact their use of rateable services is actually really close?
I think, um, it would, might be quite useful, uh, with my, that question, to explain what the consequences on other commercial rate payers would be if, given that we need a certain quantum of rates to cover the bills and no more than that. Um, my understanding is, and you please correct me if I'm wrong, that if the rate on the stadium were lifted to a much higher amount, then all other commercial properties would pay a lot less potentially.
I think, well, I think the, the biggest consequence will be that, um, that more funds will be needed from the council to DBM. So, that DBM could pay the rate account to us.
That would be the only significant.
That, that's the significant impact. That's, that's the money going around.
And in fact, that would be much more honest way of actually funding the stadium rather than this completely arbitrary rate.
Um, we, we could, you know, revisit this as part of the, the review of the stadium operating rules.
With councillor, um, you wish to be, your, your memory is correct that, um, don't ask me to explain it because it's tortuous, but, um, if we were to charge the stadium full rate, the general rate across, all rate payers would go up. So, good luck here, Vote Lee. That would be the impact. That's why we, that's, that's why we changed it in the way in which we did.
Well, we wanted to avoid this money go around. So, the stadium would become a, you know, one of our largest rate payers. Um, but so that they could pay their rates, we would have to put the rate, rates up, you know, so. But, but we can look at it, it is an option that we have. We have it with our utility rates, um.
But, but at the end of the day, if we didn't have a differential, we would not have all these worries about what do we do with a special stadium differential. We would have a much more honest appreciation of what it actually costs to run the stadium. And the dollars at the end of the day wouldn't actually change.
Yes, they would. Mrs Jones and Caversham would be paying more.
Uh, no, no, because they, Mrs Jones and Caversham would not have to pay more. Because instead of, instead of giving them this backdoor handout through rates, we would have to be more direct a- a- about how to give it. I mean, where would that money disappear to for Mrs Jones and Caversham?
I, I think to some extent, we're, I think to some extent, we're speaking across purposes here. And I think there's an element of truth in every, every one of us, but it is not the straightforward. And I don't sense that we are actually going to resolve it. So, can we take it that it will be considered?
Yep, absolutely. One, in the review. One last question. Is there a tax advantage in actually doing it this way rather than just charging the normal rates? Because that might be the case. I could see that, given that they're always going to lose money. There might be tax advantage in doing it this way.
Through your worship, if, if we could add this to, um, one of the items that we look at as part of the overall review, we can come back to you and answer all of those questions.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Could we look at if there's a review, um, other council-owned properties which are rated commercially as well? I've stumbled across a couple that, whose underlying rating is commercial rates, but they appear to be paying no rates at all. Could we have as a review something so as we can have a list of council-owned properties there? You know, like the, what the, um, government says they're worth, what they're rated as, and whether we're getting them paid on that?
Secret piece of work of, of, I won't entwine it with the stadium work, but we can certainly have a look at that as we're starting to gather, to gather all of the information for our new staff member who's looking at the properties we own and why. We can cover off, looking at the app rating.
Just seemed as a matter of principle that the stadium, while it's a big version, is a version of a variety of property we own. So, whatever we're doing with one in principle ought to be good or bad for all the things we own.
councillor Benson Pope?
Just a question in respect of the first set of recommendations in regard to the commercial, um, the possible acceleration of the farmland differential, the reduction in the farmland differential and so on. Bearing in mind that, um, that these discussions have been reported to be predicated on an overall rate increase of two point five dash three percent. Um, what are the implicat- well, are the implications of accelerating the reduction in that differential significant for the, um, potential rate rise in the, in the residential sector? Given that the same quantum, that's the quantum we're talking about in terms of the overall rate rise. Am I correct in assuming then if there were a further acceleration in the reduction of that differential that's referred to in B two, there's the potential in that to, um, increase the rate increase in the residential sector? Be beyond the three percent that people would be expecting, aside from any valuation changes which are fraught enough as we know it?
Um, through your worship, so on pages twelve dash one one oh and twelve one one one, there is a sample, I've given just a sample of one property for each category there. So, for option one, if we just take the steps in the differential that, um, we're indicating in the last year's annual plan, the average residential property rate increase would be forty-two dollars. Um, if we accelerate the farmland differential so that they end up at point eight, um, for the effect of that residential, um, property would be four, increase would be forty-three dollars. So, so the increase will go on to the residential category. Um, so it's a dollar for that average. Um, but that's, it's hard to, you know, give examples because of the revaluation. You know, properties have all moved in different ways. So, it is only an example of a property that, um, has a value increase of two point nine percent and a rate increase of, um, of basically put together on the two and a half percent scenario.
Um, any further questions? Right. Would someone care to move some of the recommendations I note that bear out options in both one and three? Does anybody wish to, um, move in some direction? Any would be fine, for the purpose of argument and then consultation. councillor Benson Pope?
Well, given that there are no waybreakers involved, uh, Mr. Searle, I'm prepared to move one on one oh five, one A, B, and B one and C.
B one?
For consultation.
C?
And two.
Three A?
And over the page?
Um, well, um.
Three A is what you want.
Well, I'll, I'll stop there and let someone else, um, let someone else, please, remove these resources. It's just that I'm, I'm not quite clear of the, the implications in respect of the quantum of rating and the effect on the residential sector in terms of, um, the options of, of one point four, two point five for the differential for the stadium.
Well, it would be good to have an omnibus, um, set of motions. So, if Carolyn could perhaps answer that very point.
Then I'm not prepared to move.
Oh, you may well be. On the implications of the choices of three, Carolyn, if, can you tease them out for us?
Especially in respect of the statement which I happen to agree with made by councillor Thompson earlier.
Look at it, your worship. The, the differences on the stadium, um, it is in a significant difference between, um, A and B. Um, I guess to be consistent with what happened last year would be option A. And then we've made this part of the stadium review, so we can report back, um, in May on that. So, uh, if, if a thousand dollars is the total difference on what the stadium would pay between the options.
If that being the case, I'm happy to move three A and four.
Okay. So, it's your seconding councillor Staines, move councillor Benson Pope, seconding councillor Staines. So, the resolution is one A and B one and C, two, as on the order paper, three A and four. Now. I take it that, sorry, I take it that, given, that we, the directive given to staff for this rate, this annual plan round was a maximum of three percent. And, uh, staff have come back with a rate rise or some cuts that enabled a rate rise of two point five. Subsequent to that, so that left, um, some six hundred odd thousand that we could decide whether to rate for, whether to use for other purposes, like strategic purposes, or whether to, um, pay down debt. And I think this is an appropriate time to be considering that. Uh, albeit that, over the last three days, we have committed, I think, small amounts of that. So, Carolyn, are you able to tell us where we're at in terms of the decisions that we've made in terms of extra spending for the purposes of consultation and where that leaves the two point five? It might be two point six or something now. I don't know, so.
Um, yes, your worship, the changes that you've added in since the meeting began. Um, the first increase was to heritage incentives, that's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, then there was the increase in the, for the rate freeze for heritage buildings, that was sixty-four thousand. Um, eighty thousand went into the aquatic, um, you know, ongoing feasibility work. Fifty thousand added into investor save investigations. And then twenty-two thousand for the food and resilience, um, resource and the policy team. So, that's four hundred and fifty-four thousand added, um, bringing the rate rise to two point nine percent.
So, the, and I'm, I'm conscious that this has been put out, this is the draft for the purposes of consultation. So, the choice that, uh, is before council now is, do we wish to strike the rates for consultation at two point nine? Given that we've made those other decisions? Or do, or do we wish to take it to three and utilise that hundred thousand for debt reduction? It's, I'm open to, uh, uh, a motion around that.
Your worship, are you, I withdrew because unfortunately their report was written in an omnibus way. Um, I can't vote in one part, things, Jeff, Tyree, things. You haven't actually put that motion yet. Are you intending this debate to be part of that other motion? So, I, I haven't been, I've withdrawn and I'm just wondering, yeah.
Um, but I'll be guided by, um, the chief executives and the implications of that. Um, we have made a number of this, let's just look at what this, the implications of this. If we take the motion as moved by councillor Benson Pope now and the previous decisions around that, those bits of extra spending, does that preclude us discussing the remaining piece of money? And if it? Okay, that's on, Carolyn. Okay? Then, then, thank you. That's, that's good. Um, so, we'll take, we'll do this and we'll do this in bits if you, if you find that you have to sit back from some, rather than others. All right. Then we will, we will deal with this and then we will deal with the remainder. So, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? councillor Van Hamsen?
I'm just wondering if we go for option one and three, uh, introducing the CPI. Why would we introduce the CPI as a rates increase when for everybody else, we've got an overall rates increase? Why would we do that?
Well, two is CPI, as is three A, so they're consistent.
Sorry, no, I'm talking about three A. Sorry, um, don't, don't, your motion was for three A. I'm just wondering why go for CPI rather than the overall rate increase?
Well, what I'm pointing out, you, you just said that it's inconsistent with the others, but I'm pointing out that in two, it's based on CPI as well, so it's consistent. But the other reason, I might have heard from CEO before was, or from Carolyn actually, was that three A is just consistent with last year. So, we may as well leave it like that until we've done the review and then we can decide whether to change it. Is that?
All right. Now, that, that makes more sense, then.
councillor Thompson?
Question, I'm sorry, I was busy engaging in debate with my colleague here and I missed it. councillor Benson Pope's one B, or B one or B two?
B one.
B one.
Right, thank you.
Further discussion? councillor Van Hamsen?
I'm just wondering, in the interests of getting the commercial and residential rates to line up better, would there be any, um, appetite for council to look at the, uh, next step to phase deduction of non-residential to actually be two steps as suggested for the farmland and?
Not from the mood of this motion. Well, not from, this, this motion is the opposite of that. So, you, you may, you, you feel free to speak against it. But that's.
No, it, it, it isn't, it isn't given as an option. I'm just wondering if, if there is a mood around council to try and get a more fair, uh, more, if you like, equitable, uh, charge for rates for business, um, which traditionally we haven't had, but we're moving slowly towards if there's any, any interest in, in speeding that up.
In terms of process, I think the way to address that is for you to vote. I'll, I'll take these separately if you wish. And I suspect that in terms of accommodating councillor, uh, Wilson, I will be taking them separately in any case. Uh, so, I'll take them separately. You can vote.
I, I won't. I've just got a sense generally already that it probably isn't worth flying, so I won't waste everybody's time with it.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to take them separately anyway, so. track councillor McTavish?
Your worship, I just, I don't have much to say, but I, I think that last year we had a really clear reason to, um, stack, do a speedier stage reduction because of the revaluations, if I recall correctly. Um, that meant that it just made much more sense in terms of everyone's, um, uh, rating to, to do that stage reduction faster. This year, I don't think there is a clear driver in that regard. And I think smoothing the impact is really important. That's why I'm supporting, um, option one B one, um, above option one B two. So, um, clarity?
councillor Thompson, I've got your remainder. Have you spoken? Would you wish to?
Oh, certainly we've spoken. Almost certainly we wished it, but I'll.
You won't get another chance. Any further discussion? Okay. You wish to, um, okay. I'm, as I said, um, and it may be a little more cumbersome, but I'll take these separately and then everyone has a chance to either jump back in or stand back or disagree. So, um, I'll put the first one, which is one A. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. One B one. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. I'll take it you're stepping back from this from councillor Wilson. That could be recorded. Um, one C. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Two. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. And three A. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. And four. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, it's carried. Okay, thank you. Now. Oh, yes, um, I need to, um, have I not done it? Oh, yes, that's right. Um, sec- if we cast our minds back to section two, economic development and city promotion, we omitted, uh, on, on purpose, from the three recommendations, uh, on the grounds that we were waiting for, um, some information about the gas works. That has not been able to be obtained at this point, so we'll have to just wait and wait for that. So, I'm going to move, and this is just in line with the other sections, um, the three recommendations in this case relating to economic development and city promotion.
Your worship, in economic development, I think.
Worship, in economic development, I was confused and we may, I'm just signaling that we may wish to go back before the wrap-up resolution. We sort of started on economic development and our CEO explained to us that a paper that was attached to that report was being withdrawn and then we jumped straight to stadium and didn't discuss the budget for economic development. And there are some matters in there that might be a little bit of discussion and just wonder whether we, we don't need to do it now before the end of. So if we, if you want to move that resolution now, we probably have to do it now.
Well, I think we, I think this would be the appropriate time because all that follows from here is the wrap-up resolution, the final recommendation, all previous resolutions etcetera being confirmed. The, I take it, and I'm going to open to correction, but I take it that submission, item seven, submission on, to the, to the ministry on oil and gas etcetera is outside the budget. So, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that until later. So I think if we, if we wish to revisit economic development, if it's appropriate, then we should do it now.
Worship, sorry, in addition to that matter, the other issue that we left lying on the table, as I understand it, the request of councillor Thompson was a motion which I was proposing around in due council's endorsement of the stadium review, which pertained to the investment account, which sits within the economic development area. So I think councillor Thompson was hoping to liaise with the CEO regarding, in addition to councillor Thompson, was a motion which I was proposing around in due council's endorsement of the stadium review, which pertained to the investment account, which sits within the economic development area. So I think councillor Thompson was hoping to liaise with the CEO regarding an additional part to that motion which he might like to put, but in the event that there was no additional motion in that regard, I think it would still be useful for us to put a motion that endorsed the CEO's review.
We will be able to come back to you further detail about, about that review in time for the wash-up. You remember that at the end of February, we get the statement of intent comes through from DVL, DVML. At that point in time, we'll have budget information, we'll be able to tell you how we're going to manage any shortfall while the review's carried out or at this point anticipated shortfall, which may change as a result of the review. So all of that will come to you in time for the final budget wash-up, we just don't have it yet.
That's totally fine, but I still, I indicated that I wanted to put a motion that whereby the council endorsed the CEO's review of the stadium operating model and my desire to do so still stands. I was asked to leave it on the table until you guys had conferred. It'd be great to have a view of it.
I'm more than happy to accept your motion.
And perhaps if I can just add to that, I've had a couple of discussions with the CEO and both of us feel that until we have a clear statement from the stadium as to what we're dealing with, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a guess and we don't want to do a guess.
In terms of numbers?
In terms of numbers. So, so I think you go ahead and do what you want to do, but I'm comfortable that we'd better wait till we've got our figures and then we come back and we deal with them around the table.
Right. What I'm sensing here is we're actually talking about two different things. Councillor McTavish wants to move something and I'm quite happy to accept it, simply giving this council's endorsement to the general thrust of the CEO's review. Councillor Thompson is, I think rightly expressing reservations about putting any numbers into anything until we are clear about them and that's in my view set of issues. So if you'd like to frame something and whilst you're doing that, councillor Staines to return to the thing that he was...
Councillor, in section two, page 2.1, it's noted that there are reductions in expenditure within economic development and we didn't have a chance to discuss how we might wish to handle those when we first looked through this budget. Those items that I, that I had some concerns about are the business internship programme, where $60,000, so council had funding in there, but council had not agreed to fund beyond this financial year. So it needs to be considered. I would like to think that that is highlighted in the annual plan consultation material because that particular programme has been very successful and there is a paper, I think, which, a memo which we can, you may already have a copy of or we can give you, which outlines what that programme has achieved while it's been running. And this year it's oversubscribed. I'm just highlighting that that, that is a very successful programme with an economic development. Whether, whether council wishes to put it in for the purposes of consultation or leave it out for the purposes of consultation, I'm not too concerned about, but I think it needs to be highlighted for consultation so that we can hear submissions for or against and maybe a bit of an opportunity for us to learn what has actually happened. There is some data on the sheet. The second one I won't speak to, it's the digital office, however, that is doing quite a lot of work in our community and I just want to make sure that the community has a chance to submit on that. And Phil Mataro Southland Grant has come to us every year, we tend to give it one year funding. Again, I think it needs to be highlighted in our annual plan consultation document so that we can get submissions on it and therefore we can make a decision whether we wish to continue to fund. And the reason I raise this is of these, there are some significant benefits to our community, there are quite a lot of things happening and they, they don't have ongoing funding, but, but the community should have a say in whether they wish to see any ongoing funding.
Right, can I just ask councillor Staines if you could put a number next to each of those?
The, the, the budget for this year, which would be the budget carrying on, I guess, would be the internship programme, $60,000. The digital office, $60,000 and Phil Mataro, $20,000.
So can I just ask again, and I'm conscious that I've never spoken to this, are you moving something because...
I'd like to move that for the purposes of consultation, these unfunded items are highlighted.
In the...
In the annual plan.
Okay, that's moved, is there a second? Second to councillor Wiley, speakers, councillor McElve.
I'm really against, and this may be how the usual process goes, but I'm really against the idea when people had an opportunity to put these things in a proposed budget, not anything in particular, but we've now been approving not only extra funding going into the budget, but things that could have come here as a proposed amount of money. And I specifically asked, for example, about the digital office as to whether it was likely to come here and it hasn't, it, it didn't have any funding implications because it's turned up here without any funding. But to my mind, if there was going to be a proposal to have an extra 120 grand turn up in here, it should have been turning up with an excuse and a reason for why it should have been in here in the first place, rather than just on the day, a proposal to put it in to be consulted on. I realise that this, this budget didn't, it came, it's presented to us with a figure on some things, but now at this point, when people have said, let's consult on an extra 22,000 for this, an extra 50,000 for that and an extra something else, now, right at the end of this process, when we've all voted on consulting on these extra things, there's another 120,000 just pop out of nowhere.
No, I don't think you understand the motion, but the, the motion is not to put any more money in.
No, but it's now to consult on having money in here and had we had it in the first place and so the things that we were consulting on had that money turn up in the first place. I mean, we, it's probably partly as a result of councillor Staines being asked to put a figure on it in a resolution, which is, but...
I might be able to help, I might... None of these three things, the things that have come forward to you in the budget are the staffs, are the staff operation of this council and the only grant things that have come forward are grant things, civic grants that were due to roll over or are part of that standard civic grant. These are three grants that are given through, through the economic development work stream, if you like. Staff have never added those into the budgets and wouldn't do so now because they're not staff work, they're not part of the work of council. They are, they are grants that come, submissions are made on them every year and a decision is made about whether to add them into the budget or not. So councillor Staines is saying, and we, and we have done it before many a time where we say, these were one-year grant funds or two-year grant funds, please note they're coming to an end and it's up to people to ask whether they would like them to be put back in, so that's what councillor Staines does it for. There is no process, if you like, for us to have made an advance recommendation to put those in the budget, it's not money, it's not money for work that we do.
The other half of that question, sort of, can I, that, does that mean that if we're just about to be asked what we might do with any difference between 2.9 increase or 2.8 or three or something, we imagine that that might happen or that we don't imagine that that might happen? Or what, what status has that in the sense of being asked what we might do if we had some leeway between the 2. something and the three?
Well, that's up to everyone around the table to make any suggestion they wish. And what I notice, the motion in front of us is not about putting money into the budget, so that, that, I'll, I'll come back to that and if someone wants to suggest that that's how it's used, that's up to everyone around the table. Councillor Vangis.
I would just like councillor Staines to clarify what he means by highlighting these things in, in the annual plan on the budget. I mean, are we going to have a highlight section in, in the annual plan? What, what does highlighting actually mean?
That they are, it's not putting them in bold, all it is, is that, that it is noted in the annual plan that these following programmes will not fund.
But there's a whole lot of programmes to that kind of, why these?
Why these? Because...
Where would it go in the annual plan?
Because partly what, what our, our chief executives said, because these things are undertaken by outside organisations, other than the first one, which is an internship programme, they are not normally included in the budget, so they, they come as submission to council and council decides whether they wish to apply funding.
So where would you put them in, in the annual plan? We've, we've...
In the economic development budget from lines, which appear in the annual plan, that the following, just as it says it here, following items are not, not funded.
Okay, so this is under EDU. Have we had a comprehensive cost benefit of the EDU? This probably is a question for Sue, actually. I've been questioning EDU budgets for many years now and I'm wondering if there's ever been a comprehensive cost benefit paper on what EDU spends?
No.
Is there any likely bit of variable being one?
I think it would be fair to say that the change of the local government act means that we do need to more, more often and more rigorously look at round cost benefit of what we do and I'd expect the economic development team to be subject to that, just like any other party of council.
Could that be in the coming year? Is it something I can look forward to, having hoped for 10 years now that it might happen?
The EDU, of course, is implicated in the change around the marketing strategy, so around the marketing team, so as you go about setting up that new unit, so you talk about creating a whole new unit, I would expect them to be setting KPIs around their deliverable and around the cost of that, so in that sense you should get some of that kind of information, yes. Can I just point out though, around what councillor Staines is trying to do, actually regardless of this motion, the annual plan will contain a report under the economic development team, just like everywhere else, that says, note, as the draft annual plan stays, the following three things will have a service level adjustment. As per the draft annual plan, there will be no more sexy summer jobs, there will be no more digital office and there will be no more Phil Mataro. So, so actually at that, at that light level, we, we would be highlighting those things anyway because they're three things ceasing or changing, that's right.
So there's no need for this motion at all.
It's gotta be in this, I mean.
Good, I'd say just that then.
But I would point out that anyone around the table can move any motion to note anything in the plan that they want and put it to the meeting and if the council agrees to it. So you could, for instance, put a motion that half the staff be fired tomorrow and if you could get support around the table for it, then we would put that into the annual plan. Anyway.
Privilegio, that springs to mind, Your Worship.
Councillor Benson Pope. Councillor Benson Pope.
Not important, given that we only have one employee. I just, as far as I'm concerned, you've just made some of this quite clear, Mr Chairman, this is the council's budget, actually, the draft has been prepared by staff and if we weren't able to promote change or advocate change, which seems to me we've been doing for three days, then we would have been wasting our time. So I don't understand the concerns that are being expressed about this. I think councillor Staines has been quite responsible by not wanting to add the money just to point out to people as we consult or to draw attention to the fact that something that's previously been funded one way or another is no longer got any financial support. And what happens in the end with either the total rate increase or what's in this budget will be the result of a set of discussions with the community and around the table here.
Any further discussion, councillor Thompson?
Sorry, it's just a question really and there is, I mean, from my personal perspective, I think that the business internship programme is really, it's a really worthy one and I think it delivers good results. I think all of them do and, but that one in particular for me stands out as a real highlight. Is there, is it not considered, I was just looking through the economic development strategy here and one of the priority actions under a hub of skills and talent is the education and employment slash self-employment pathways would not approach like the internship project but into that existing EDU budget fund? Yeah, so I guess my question is, given that we have a fund that prioritises actions in those areas, that is one which to me seems like it's delivering on one of those priority action pathways, would that not qualify for funding through the, what are we calling it, the contestable funds?
There is, the contestable fund no longer exists as such.
I mean, the growth...
There is, but these are, there has been some numbers used to generate that overall budget and there is what, a third, a third additional, like if all of these items were funded, that's a third increase on what's in the budget now. So my concern is that if, if they are, if the community convinces us that they're of value and they wish them to be in, then either we can take out a third of the planned work of EDU or we can increase the funding or a mixture of both. And so what, what caused a bit of concern for me is that they appeared, and rightly so, in our papers as unfunded, but had no, in doing that has no regard for whether or not they have been successful and have delivered to the community things that the community wishes to see continued or not. So hence the reason that I, I want to make sure that the community is aware that these items are not included in the budget and if they wish to see them included, they would need to submit or if they wish them to remain unfunded, they would need to submit.
So I guess that for me as a, like as a, if I was wanting to submit, just putting myself in submitted shoes, I think the questions that I would have around it, I think it's great that we would be highlighting them and I really support that, but the questions that I would have around it would be, why is, why does this not fall within the existing envelope of the EDU budget? So maybe there's some reasons that could be articulated there. What actually does sit within the EDU budget currently within that contestable fund? What is being funded by that? Those would be the questions because until I had that information, I would find it very difficult to comment on whether or not this would be a priority for me in the EDU area.
In terms of the background, all of the other funds, all of the other funding pools and grants that the EDU had, that they were making for a raft of different purposes, got all rolled together, took 200,000 off the top to help fund the stadium and we put the rest into a contestable fund for economic... put the rest into a contestable fund for economic development, apart from these grants which go into, to named external organisations, from Southland to Thumotago, digital office and, and sexy summer jobs from University.
So, so.
And one, and one or two others, Audacious and Hubster.
So the, um, I, I guess what the, the question, again, the question that I would have around that was the rate pair would be, given that some of the fun, as I understand, that some of the contestable funding that sits within that ADS Grow, Deneaton Partnership budget contestable fund envelope, does go to external organisations, albeit in little bits and it's, that's quite controlled, how these, and I'm not criticising, I'm just saying that that would be a question that I would have, which might be helpful to articulate.
Uh, to share just now, during the discussion about the economic development budget earlier on, a couple of days ago now, we talked about, we are appearing a report around the economic development strategy implementation, and use of that 385,000 that's in this current year to try and answer some of those questions. But we know that that hasn't been reported back to the committee, well, the economic development committee, to be able to do that. That might provide some of the answers to the questions that you've got around the overall budget. The budget, as has been identified, the economic development budget has been cut in different ways and it has been reduced. So if we do that report, that might provide the answers for you, that then allows when the annual plan process comes up, to go to judge the submissions that are likely to come in around these three. Okay, so that background.
For me, it's not about my understanding, because I'm quite confident that report will articulate a lot of the answers, but it's about helping people who are trying to understand why these projects have been highlighted and why they're not, why they can't be considered as part of the contestable fund. That, I think that's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to signal.
The, the digital office, one in particular, is quite interesting, because it sort of nominally sits in EDU, because that's where it was initially funded from. And it, so it's been funded for three years, with a decision made every year to fund it again. But in some ways, the objectives of the digital officer, it, it could perhaps more be a sit in community development, really. And so in that sense, sexy summer jobs is around creating work and Thumotago Southland is around making sure they can do their business here, if you like. So they, they've got quite different drivers, the three grants.
And you feel what type of Southland, in some ways it's almost like a civic grant.
Well, that, in, in essence, certainly those two, maybe less, sorry, the business internship, but certainly those two are much more like civic grants. And so all of the other civic grants have been rolled over, these, these two or these three, haven't, which is, I guess, the point that can, and that, that makes them a little bit unusual in our budget, but they're all only annually, they're only being given annually. So we, we'll, I mean, certainly anyway, the annual plan will note that they're finishing. I guess the question from councillor Staines is, do you want specifically to raise them as an item for consultation, as an issue for consultation? In which case they get mentioned, and if anybody wants to tell you what they think of them, they can.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on this point? Councillor Staines, do you wish to?
I think we, assuming we agree that these will be included in the plan for consultation, which the chief executives indicated they will be, there doesn't need to be a resolution.
Well, they'll be mentioned, they'll be mentioned in the, somewhere in the depths of the document, it will mention a drop in levels of service. They won't necessarily be highlighted as one of the issues for consultation. So there's a number of things that get specifically pulled out and mentioned, here's an issue for consultation, if you would like them to be.
I'd like to, the resolution, highlight it for the purposes.
It has been, it has been moved, we're in discussions, so we, we've been in discussion.
Okay. So I can't talk, give you.
Well, you have.
That's what I'm saying, sorry.
So, is there anyone else wants to? All right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Carried. Now, I'll, I think it's the appropriate time to put these, the three recommendations on the decision sheet on economic development and city promotion, I'll move from the chair. No, that's second.
I've just, I've seen through the.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
I think it's the investment account one, which is why I raise it now. Oh, yeah.
Sorry, the what?
Well, it sits within this economic development.
Yes, no, that's fine, I, I overlooked the fact that you indicated you would move it somewhere. So this is a, the council knows and endorses the chief executive to adapt the comprehensive review of the stadium. Any to be put back on the considerations?
Can I be clear, that will not be, this will not be done in time for the annual plan deliberations, it really won't, that would be by the, by the end of February, that we're aiming to.
Final.
Oh, final.
Annual plan, yeah, as opposed to grants.
Potentially.
Well, the, the critical thing is, if there are budgetary implications, then we need to be aware of it.
Okay, yep, yep. We're aiming at mid-year, but assuming we'll be a hard bit of a, a lot clearer by the end of May, that's right, okay, apologies.
So, um, so perhaps with, with budgetary implications, just cut out with the results of the three of you, just say with any budget, any budgetary implications, or, yeah.
Right. You're seeking it, councillor Staines?
Councillor.
Seeking councillor Staines?
Question, oh, it's just, I'm, I'm keen to be assured by the chief executive that that's achievable in terms of the wording of the motion. I wonder if we might want to qualify with preliminary results or just so that there's a bit of comfort, should there be any slippage in the timing of what you're reviewing and...
I'd be happy if you just said we endorse your review. I mean, look, at this point in time, to be honest, given the number of stakeholders and certainly of the number of different options to the stadium that I received by email over the weekend, if anything to go by, this likely be, this is, you know, this is not once over likely, we're talking about a sensible, comprehensive review. If we knew when we set the stadium up, what we know today about its, about its revenue potential, what model would we have set it up under, and is that the one we've got now? That's, that's really what we're talking about. Would we have done things the way we currently have done? And I do need to be sure that that is done right, rather than quickly. I'd rather put in place a, a, a holdover mechanism with full transparency and get it finalized for the long-term plan than do it and cut corners in time to get it for May. So we were aiming, we, we've kind of used words like middle of the year, because until we, until we really get this thing halfway into our belt, we're not quite sure how long it will take. We can certainly aim for that, and if it changes, I will come back to you.
Would it be your preference, Dr. Madro, then for me to split that in two, effectively, have the first part which endorses your comprehensive review and then say, um...
Preliminary qualifications.
That, yeah, that should there be any budgetary implications for the 2014, 15 year.
We would like to hear that.
That's great, that's interesting.
Yep. Yes, yes, that would be really great, actually, that, that would really work.
You're happy with that, councillor Staines?
Yes.
Councillor Pete, oh, councillor McTavish, do you wish to speak any further to?
No, I think that that's an entirely sensible suggestion, so.
Councillor Pete.
I hadn't thought this, but in light of what we heard on Thursday, was it, from the chief executive, I think it refers to the stadium's management and operating model, because DVL, DMVL seem to be mentioned a few times, so could I suggest that we add the word management?
The word management.
Sorry, sorry, we, management.
You have elected?
Management.
I was going to add maintenance as well.
They will be part of the review, councillor.
That's part of management.
So the prospect person's a self-insurer. I mean, for us to be paying heavy insurance on the stadium just doesn't make any sense at all.
But that, that is part of the operating model. So it should either be management or operating, it'll be one or the other, or both, charged twice. Right. Further discussion? Notes and, and endorses, yeah, both, well, any further discussion? All right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Now, I'll get to the three recommendations that I keep thinking that it's appropriate time to do. I'll move from the chair, the three recommendations, as on the decision sheet relating to economic development, city promotion, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Right, now, there, there remains the final recommendation and there remains the remaining headroom funding under the 3%, should anyone wish to, I think we've got three options, really. It can be devoted, be added in and devoted to something, the two options, really, or it can be, or it can strike the rate for draft consultation purposes at 2.9 as long as, it's 179,000 actually, I've just been told. So I'm open, I'm in the hands of the meeting in terms of what anyone wishes to suggest. Councillor McTavish.
Well, I think you wish it, given, given our approach last year, which I think was a good one, my suggestion would be that, and I'm hoping to move, that we apply the 179,000, is it right, to debt reduction.
Okay. You're moving, is there a second? Councillor Wilson?
So effectively, we, we're solving a lot of places, solving three percent.
Yes, so the end result is, all the decisions that we've made up until now are included, and it's a 3% as indicated rate rise. Are there any speakers? It's councillor Van Gis.
Given the anticipated news from the stadium and DVML, I think that it's, although it's a nice gesture to say that we want to knock 170 grand off the, of the debt, I think that it's highly unlikely to actually occur. It might be nicer simply just to stick at the 2.9 and say that, look, there's a question mark over stadium finances and we've done our best and, but we're anticipating some other news from stadium finances. To me, it would be, to, to say that we're going to knock some more off the budget, off, off the debt, I think would be almost window dressing. A, it's a small amount, and B, we've got news to come from the stadium yet.
Councillor Campbell.
We've just been told the CPI is 1.4, this is more than double a CPI. Agnes from Southland, who has to pay double her CPI money and rates increase, won't be pleased whatever we do, if it's double what she gets extra.
Councillor Thompson.
I, I was intending to move a different motion, so I'm stuck with this one. The, I, I just feel slightly nervous about committing that last, given the size of the amount that we're talking about, 100, what have you said, 70,000? I think it was a different situation when we were talking about a million dollars last time. And I, I think, you might recall that last time we, we publicly stated there would be a moratorium on any new grant applications, and despite that, council still managed to vote some money in annual plan hearings for new grant applications. So given that we haven't done that this year, it strikes me as tempting fate enormously. So I suppose I just, I feel nervous about, I, I guess, as a statement of intent, which is what an annual plan is, fine, but we could very easily find ourselves in, in annual plan deliberations aiming to reverse that, that view. And I'm just not sure whether that's the right word to go about it. I prefer to just go out there with a rate increase of 2.9 or whatever it would be, and recognise that depending on the outcome of what we hear in annual plan submissions, we have the ability to address some of that if we need to, or we still have the ability to decide at that point in time that we, we will add 150 or whatever it is into debt repayment. So, yeah, I don't feel, I don't really like the motion, but it's getting late in the day and probably not that important.
Councillor Staines.
I support the resolution. And the reason for that is that of those budgetary items that we have added, the votes around this table would indicate that it's our intention, they were put up as our intention to include those funding lines. So in fact, we have assigned effectively, or we wish to assign, 2.9% of the funding from funding increase on rates. So there is no flexibility beyond that at all, if you, in a way, if you go out and consult on 2.9 or 2.8 something or whatever it is, and then you, you have your public come to you and say, these things we would like to do, then do you wish to go back to the public and say, well, we could sculpt it onto, would not, but we're going to make it three? Or do as we have done in previous years, set the indicative rate at three and say, if there is any funding, if there is any space to repay debt or to invest to save, then, then we will choose to either do that or not do that at the time that we strike the right. So to me, you take away flexibility by going and, you take away 179,000 dollars of flexibility, because my general view is most of the things that we've added to our budget so far are things that we really do wish to do and probably our community will, will view them possible. So I think it's safe to run with three. If we don't need to use the full three, we could have this debate again and either strike the rate of 2.9 or assign the remaining dollars of rate take to debt reduction.
For my part, I support this motion, as much as anything, for consistency. I've said at the beginning of this meeting on Thursday, that necessarily the first budget of a triennium is largely developed by the previous council, and that's fine, previous council, and this council picked up on it quite quickly, said to the community, we will not go above 3%. Also said to the community, we recognise that debt reduction is a priority for this council going forward. It's the major risk that we have in front of us. And that's certainly been picked up on by standard and course, as well as our community. So I think that it is incumbent on us to, to stick to that commitment and to illustrate the fact that we intend to, as much as anything, no matter what the amount is, I know it's only 179,000, but it indicates that we were serious when we, when we said, when we acknowledged that debt is still an issue and that we still had to maintain discipline and still had to maintain pressure on that. So I think this is an important signal, as much as anything else, that we give whilst being able to stay within the 3% that we set ourselves as the, as the, as the maximum we would go to. Councillor Staines, do you wish to?
I think it's me who wish it.
Oh, sorry, it was you. The day is to councillor Staines.
Well, just briefly, I mean, I take councillor Thompson's point, and actually, I'm almost tempted to change my vote, because I think he, he made, he makes a good one, and that is, you know, this is a draft budget and it is entirely plausible that we will get a number of people come to us and, you know, maybe, maybe we'll be convinced to reduce some of the budgets that we put in, or we may be, maybe convinced to increase them or to put additional things in. That's our job. But I, I think the signal that I would, and the reason behind moving what I did was because I think that the signal that we should be giving, in, in my words, which is, the signal that we should be giving our community is that if we do, whatever room we do have at the end of this process, whether that's 179,000 or 9,000 or 200,000 in the event that we're convinced to remove things from the budget, that will be applied to debt reduction, whatever that amount is. I agree that it might have a slightly less positive aspect of, you know, if we do have to reduce it in some way, that, that's probably not such a good look, but, yeah, I mean, I think everyone understands this is a draft budget, that we're open to hearing, hearing everyone's perspectives on it, and that we certainly won't be submitting anything until after we hear from our community. So I'm, I'm, I'm relaxed about it, I think I will stick with my motion, but I appreciate your perspective to the country.
All right, I'm going to put it.
I'm just wondering what it is now, because we've got a couple of options, actually, so.
So I'm not sure.
I'm just not, what the resolution is.
The resolution.
By 179,000.
To debt, to debt repayment. Okay.
Can I put up something or just check it, because we didn't actually...
We didn't actually see it? Okay.
Well, that was my interpretation, what councillor Staines said.
Get the additional to make up 3% for debt reduction.
This is my needs, like we, we would.
It's, it's...
And I would, and I would remind everyone, this is for the purposes of consultation. And I would, and I would remind everyone, this is for the purposes of consultation. Councillor Hawke.
Leave that, somehow, to, after we go through the full process, to see what's done to the left, rather than commit to repaying the debt.
This is for consultation, so when we get to the hearings, the submissions may have us all change our minds. All right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Could I have a show of hands, please? Those in favour, please put their hands up. It's carried. Okay. Now, the final, Jane can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think now's the time for the final recommendation. So, this is the wrap-up one, I'll move from the chair, that all previous resolutions, including amendments to resolutions, be confirmed for the purpose of public consultation. Second councillor Staines, does everyone understand that that's just a straight process, confirming the preliminary resolution that we passed at the beginning? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry it. Thank you, right, that is the draft budget. Now, there's one further item on the agenda, which is item seven, submission to the Ministry for the Environment on the Exposure Draft of the Proposed Exploration Drilling Brook Oil and Gas Regulations. Now, councillor Zon, will, this relates to the report, whereabouts, is that, the report's not, it was circulating, that's right, circulating, it's not in the folds. So, questions councillors, I'll open it up for questions of Maria and Nicola. Councillor White.
Thank you, you wish it. Can I ask Maria and Nicola, why do they believe that 140 days is needed for, as part of the submission for test drilling?
I think the difference is between, the reason they're consulting is they're saying they're changing it from discretionary to non-notified discretionary, and I guess the longer time period is if you have a public consultation on the issue, that that might take a longer time in terms of process, so...
So, I understand that, but I'm, for a test, for someone to do a test drill and not do full development or exploration, but this is only for a test, you know, whether they go out there and draw two test holes, that you still believe that the decency should submerge and say, there needs a 140-day period of consultation?
I think the reason behind the draft submission that we've put together is because by changing the classification, you would take away any opportunity for the public to have a say, rather than being about the timeframe.
Any other questions, councillor? Councillor McTavish.
Well, I'm just, I'm happy to move, you wish it.
Right, what? Just, what's your... I'm just actually looking for it, so that I can see what they... All right. Happy to second that. So that's moved, you're confirming it, and second councillor Hawkins, do you wish to speak to it initially?
No, I think that we've had a very clear steer from our community, that there are strong views on this particular issue, and I think probably both sides of the discussion would wish the views to be heard about any proposed drilling off our coastline, so I think all that this submission is doing is endorsing the concept of a participatory democracy, which is simply what we strive, or what I believe we should be striving to champion as an organisation.
Okay, any further discussion? Councillor White.
You know, I really struggle when a company is trying to get a business started, to see if it's worth moving forward, that you're putting them under the full process, as if they're going to do a full development. And to me, this is what this paper's all about, is you're saying, oh, yeah, you know what, let's do a little test here, let's do a little test there, hang on, we're going to put you through the whole process, we're going to put you through the whole 140-day consultation process. Now, I think that's a huge barrier to business, and I think we really need to say, you know, let's allow businesses, let's support businesses get started, and see if there's actually something there. And that's all that these businesses are trying to do, is they're trying to see if something's there. They're not asking for full development, for explanation, exploration, they're asking to get a foot in the door, to do testing. And I think to go to a non-discretionary, is, non-notified discretionary, is the right process in this case.
Councillor Pete.
I would support this motion to endorse the submission as drafted, mainly, and a little turn on, I think, what councillor White is questioning, the classification for consent, for the test drilling. And non notified, of course, excludes public scrutiny. I guess the test for me would be, whether, if you were proposing something on the scale on the land of New Zealand, whether it would be non notified or notified, and I would think that it would be the latter, that it would be a discretionary activity, and require a public consultation, so that's why I'm supporting it.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Well, I'd like to congratulate the authors of the submission, because I think it is quite clear and concise, and for me, there are two issues, and they're both highlighted. The first one is the ridiculous consultation period, and the timing, which can't be interpreted other than as a direct attempt to make sure this is the little response as possible. And it's something we are very aware of, and central government is also quite aware of it, and uses it quite cynically in this instance. And the second thing is, this is not an isolated instance, this is part of a number of amendments to environmental protection legislation, which seriously erodes the ability of the community to participate, be aware of, dash, participate in those decision-making processes, and I think this draft is couched in exactly the right level and the right terms, and I repeat those congratulations to the drafters.
No further discussion. Councillor Vanas.
I was just going to say that the staff have made a good job of actually presenting the issue here, they've put obviously quite a lot of work into making it clear, and it's really nice to be able to read things that even I understand at a first read, and I appreciate the colour diagrams in particular, they're always very helpful, pictures do it for me. I can't help... I'd quit while I was ahead of other councillor Vanas. I can't help thinking, however, that any submission that we put into central government is going to get even less attention than some of the submissions we get here. It'll get filed, it'll get taken, no notes of it all, and government will go ahead and do their own specific thing. So, given that that is almost inevitably going to be the case, could I suggest that next time, you put less time into making such a really lovely and very well-designed and very clear submission, and get on and do some things that actually might make a difference? Thank you.
All right. No further discussion, I'm going to put them. You want to speak to... Right, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry it. And that, I believe, is the last item on our agenda. Can I thank councillors for a good-humoured, constructive, expeditious set of days of meetings? It's been, it's been probably as good a draft annual plan council meeting process as I've been through, so thank you, that was councillor's doing. And, and I would like to, I would like to thank staff, particularly Carolyn and Jane, but I know there were far more than they, or them, involved, but there's been a tremendous amount of work gone into these folders, and distilling it down to just two folders, so thank you all for that, for the staff.